Good evening. This is a special notice from Paramount City Hall pursuant to Executive Order N-2920 executed by the Governor of California on March 17, 2020 and as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19. The meeting of the City Council scheduled for tonight, Tuesday, October 6 at 6:00 p.m., will allow members of the public to participate and address the Paramount City Council during the open session of the meeting via live stream and/or teleconference only. And with that, I will now turn it over to Mayor Lemmons to start the meeting. Mayor?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moreno. The October 6 meeting of the Paramount City Council is called to order. We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Aguayo, and we will follow that with the invocation by Reverend Grady Jones from the New Commandment Baptist Church. Okay, if we can all please stand. Grady, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray, please. We turn to God our Father and make Him create a God that come for you, President, thanking you for another day. How blessed are we, Father? We are in a country, Father, that is holy for everyone, Father God, that is united in harmony, that need be revived, Father God, we pray, for our nation as we go through this virus condition and I don't understand the entire world. Bring this world together, Father God, like only you can do. Pray for our city as well, Father God, that we continue to lead our direction, Father, where you have me go. Let's proclaim the blessed city representing you on every hand. Prefer citizens committed, Father God, in this city, that we all understand the importance of serving you first of all. When we serve you first of all, Father, we get everything to work out according to your will and your way. And keep this council and this city in your perfect will. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pastor, could you stay for just one second?
I just want to, on behalf of my colleagues up here on the dais, I wanted to thank you for, again, your leadership role and unity in the community. I was able to view the forum this weekend, and as always, you guys were just phenomenal, engaging the public, asking questions that I know I had on my mind, being very thoughtful in what you bring forth. So thank you as you continue to lead us through this time, you and your committee. Thank you very much.
I'll send you a check.
May we have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
I'm here.
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Quayre Stallings?
Here.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Here.
Mayor Lemmons?
Here.
Will there be a motion to excuse Councilmember Guian?
So moved.
So second. Been moved by Vice Mayor Olmos and seconded by Councilmember Quayre Stallings to excuse the absence of Councilmember Guian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Here.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move into some presentations, and our first one is going to be for National Breast Awareness Month. And as you can all see, we have a guest with us from the American Cancer Society, and as well as that, please note that we are all wearing our pink cardigans and our breast cancer awareness ribbon. And I'm looking around, and it looks like most, if not all of the gentlemen have on pink ties, so thank you very much for being so supportive. October is the month of many special observances. Tonight, we will be recognizing a few of them. October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which supports the prevention, early detection, and treatment of the disease. In the United States, one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, making it the most common form of cancer among women. But improvements have been made thanks to the efforts of groups like the American Cancer Society and the Susan J. Komen Organization. Breast cancer deaths have steadily declined since 1990. Women who get screened with regularity now have 47% less chance of dying from breast cancer. And there are more than 3.5 million survivors alive today in this country, the largest group of all cancer survivors. To show our support for this issue, the City Council and staff are wearing some of the pink tonight as we proclaim National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Paramount. We are joined via Zoom by Nancy Guttmeyer, Senior Community Develop Manager of the American Cancer Society in Long Beach. Hi, Nancy, would you like to say a few words?
Hi, thank you so much, Mayor Lemmons. You actually took half of my speech away, which is great, because that just makes you all aware of so many statistics that are out there. And just one other thing that I'd like to say is, you know, women don't have symptoms of breast cancer. It happens to be found through self-examination and mammograms, and that's why finding it early is key. Early detection will help save their lives or prolong their life because of this detection. And living healthy lifestyles with diet and exercise also helps reduce risks. But there is so much information that can be found at cancer.org, and cancer patients and their caregivers and family members can reach out 24 hours, seven days a week at our 1-800-227-2345 phone line, where you could talk to someone and get answers, find resources in your community. And another thing that we've been able to pivot in this COVID situation is our Reach to Recovery Program, where women of the same type of breast cancer are put together and they go through that journey together. And they are mentoring each other, and our Reach to Recovery Program has gone digital as well. And that information can also be found at cancer.org. But I just thank you so much. We've been able to adjust, and we can't do it without volunteers and donors to help us with our research and donating money to doctors that are finding a cure. We have 168 breast cancer grants right now throughout the nation, doctors looking for a cure. So thank you so much. Really appreciate this and this time.
Thank you again, and thanks for being so present in our community. I've actually had the opportunity to use the 1-800 line, and I got a woman, I don't know if they're all women, but she was extremely empathetic and had lots of really valuable information to offer me at about 2:00 in the morning when I was stressing over something. So it's a great service, and thank you for being so present in the city of Paramount.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, next, our next October proclamation is for the National Crime Prevention Month. Fighting crime often involves law enforcement working with residents as equal partners. In that spirit, we acknowledge the city's successful relationship with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Thanks to this partnership, Paramount has seen a continual decline in serious crime for decades. Though the first half of this year, for instance, overall crime fell by 6% compared to the same period last year, with violent crime dropping a dramatic 17%. During Crime Prevention Month, sheriff's personnel will share our safety tips with the public through our social media outlets. We encourage residents to support prevention activities that help keep our community safe throughout the year. Now, we'd like to present a proclamation to Captain David Springle. And Captain, could you come up? We're just going to hold the proclamations up here, right? Hi, Captain. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd love to. Thank you. First, thank you very much, Mayor Lemmons, Council ladies, and on behalf of the sheriff, Alex Villanueva, many proud men and women that proudly serve the community of Paramount and work at the Station of Lakewood. Definitely like to thank council, City Manager Moreno, Adriana, and the Public Safety Team, and the community for the partnership we share. This partnership and the communication between the public, the city, and the department is what allows us to have the best success for public safety. So we're thankful for that partnership. Additionally, on a separate note, I'd like to thank council and the city for their support of our deputies that were injured from the Transit Services Bureau with regard to the reward money that was, that the city actively participated in. I'm pleased to say that the suspect has been identified, arrested, charges have been filed, and our deputies are home, recovering on their own. So even though they have a long road to go in recovery, they're working that way. And then obviously, today, there was a number of incidents in the city, and I'd like to recognize the Public Safety Team for their support and partnership, bringing out waters and supporting our personnel with food this evening after it had been a very long day of work. So just very thankful, I'm humbled to serve the city, work in partnership with city management and council and the community. We are very proud to be a part of the community of Paramount and look forward to continuing to provide the best service possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you too, Captain. And also, while you're here, on behalf of my colleagues, we'd like to thank you for your participation in the Unity in the Community Forum. You had some very insightful information to share with us, and we're so happy that you're supportive of helping us move forward in the city of Paramount and finding resolutions that will work for all of us. So thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it. God bless. Thank you.
October is also National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's a sad fact that domestic violence impacts nearly one in four women and one in seven men in the United States. This has a devastating impact on individuals of every background and situation. Domestic Violence Awareness Month brings attention to preventing this shameful behavior and shines a light on the organizations who help victims. Locally, Sucasa, Ending Domestic Violence, is one such organization that has done important work in Paramount since 1979. We appreciate their 41 years of dedication to our community. Tonight with us on Zoom is Dean Lockwood, Director of Development and Community Outreach for Sucasa. Hello, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having us tonight. We truly appreciate support of the city of Paramount.
Would you like to say a few words to us about Sucasa?
Thank you, I would. As you mentioned, it's, the public health crisis of domestic violence really affects everybody, whether it's a direct survivor of domestic violence themselves, or a neighbor, or maybe it's the boss who isn't able to have their employee come to work because of domestic violence. There's millions of dollars lost every year in productivity because of that, just to think of it that way. A few of the other stats that occur, there's 20,000 phone calls every hour to a domestic, excuse me, every day to a domestic violence hotline. Typically, we will serve about 1,600 of those phone calls each year through our hotline that's open 24 hours a day. There are 20, excuse me, there's, as you mentioned, one in four women and one in nine men are, will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. We serve about 20, excuse me, about 200 survivors every year in our shelters. We have another program, a domestic violence housing program, which will help serve people who may not be in an emergency situation, who don't need shelter, but are able to take advantage of this to maybe protect their permanent housing or to move on to permanent housing. So it helps eliminate the homeless issue as well. We will have over 11,000 bed nights in our shelters. So we serve a lot of people and provide counseling. We provide life skills training. We help move people from the trauma of the night after an event to the point where they're able to reintegrate back into the community with full employment and education and the direction and the path, and the healing process is taking place. With the help of the city of Paramount and the city council, we are able to manage these things. So we thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood, and again, we appreciate your presence in the city of Paramount and the service that you offer to our residents. Thank you again. The final commemorative recognition tonight is for National Community Planning Month. Paramount is an excellent example of what good urban planning can do. From the tough times of the 1970s and the early 80s, when we were considered an urban disaster area, through the following decades, Paramount leaders and professional planners have made the city a model of revitalization. During Community Planning Month, we have an opportunity to recognize the Paramount Planning Commission, whose various members have faithfully served our community since 1957. We thank them for their time and their expertise and for helping to make great improvements to our city. We also thank all of those professional planners on our staff, past and present, for the creative work they have done. We encourage our residents to participate in upcoming planning efforts such as the housing element, the environmental justice element, and the North Paramount Boulevard specific plan. And with that, we have a proclamation for the National Community Planning Month, and, John, we present it to you. Finally, we're moving on now to highlight the local companies who have been honored by the Sanitation District of Los Angeles County for properly discharging their wastewater. This keeps pollution off our beaches and out of the ocean. Nearly 1,000 companies were eligible for the Good Corporate Citizen Award, but only 432 qualified in 2019. 10 of them are in Paramount. As we do each year, we are recognizing them for this award. Our congratulations to Ace Clearwater Enterprises, Anaplex Corporation, Ariza Cheese Company, Braun Lennon Services, Carlton Forge Works, CMPC Transition, Maricon Vinegar, Paramount Dairy, STNI Incorporated. The city of Paramount was also named for our efforts in this area. And that's it for tonight's presentations. I want to thank everyone who took part tonight for making Paramount a wonderful place to live. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to City Council Public Comment Updates. Mr. Moreno?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are no public comment updates from the previous meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to public comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have five verbal, and I'm looking over at our city clerk, how many written? Two written for the general public comments, and then we have several for some of the upcoming items on the agenda. So once again, five during a regular public comment and two written. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andrew Vialpando, our Assistant City Manager, who will work through the five verbals. Andrew?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Again, a public comment will be held via telephone. Please give me one minute while I get the first caller on the line.
Hello?
Good evening, this is the city of Paramount calling for Jaime Lopez.
This is me.
Hi, Mr. Lopez. We're contacting you regarding your request for public comment at the Paramount City Council meeting. You'll be given three minutes, and your time will start now.
I would like to remind your community tonight that after four months, your city council has not genuinely expressed solidarity for Black Lives Matter. It took no time at all for preparing and approving $10,000 tax dollars towards a law enforcement reward last month, and while that can be justified, it has taken you four months to express unequivocal support for Black Lives Matter. And I know you think you have, but what you have said at the last meeting was extremely qualified at best. Councilmember Guian, this continues to be complicated for you, and I trust you'll listen to this meeting later. You claim that city council meetings don't offer enough time to get into the complexities. Why don't you write an open letter or offer a video testimonial to your community and show us how knowledgeable you are about this movement? Show us that you've done your homework and why supporting Black Lives Matter is complicated for someone who calls themselves a social justice advocate. Clearly, Mayor Lemmons has also not done serious homework on this. After months of avoiding to answer and then only hinting at articles she read, she stated having read the Black Lives Matter website, but only a few seconds later chose to emphasize an All Lives Matter message and ended her comments by thanking deputies for being caught up in quote-unquote "all this dissension." Your disproportionate law enforcement sympathies are clear, and your dialogue is really just a commercial for such sympathies. The unity in the community has been a failure from a public participation standpoint. The residents who called into that meeting identified a disconnect between Black Lives Matter and the city's understanding of it, a local history of anti-blackness, and cop sympathizing. And as you've done with my own comments for months now, these callers were either entirely ignored or denied serious consideration. The pastor was quick to say, and I quote, "It's not about Black Lives Matter, it's about All Lives Matter. That's what this group is about," unquote. A vast majority of what you call a dialogue can be boiled down to Captain Springle and Chief Ramble feeding us law enforcement perspectives. Clearly, that's what these meetings seek to emphasize. As for the written questions, those were conveniently answered by pre-written statements, with Captain Springle repeatedly reading definitions of police terms and procedures. The honest dialogue you claim to value and promote is clearly not what these stage events have been. The pastor said, quote, "Our purpose is to unify the community with law enforcement," unquote. His words, not mine. How unsophisticated do you think your residents are for you to insist that these are open dialogues? Don't piss on our back and tell us it's draining.
Mr. Lopez, you have 20 seconds left.
We deserve leaders who are humble enough to acknowledge their ignorance of and abstention from social justice, not those who keep hiding behind stage events in repeated attempts to convince us otherwise. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another caller?
Yes, Dan. Hello?
Good evening, this is the city of Paramount calling for Alejandro Llanes.
Oh, yes, this is him.
Hi, Alejandro. This is the city of Paramount. We're calling regarding your request for public comment at the Paramount City Council meeting. You're being broadcast live to the city council. You'll be given three minutes, and I'll give you 20, I'll give you notice when you have 20 seconds left. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I started setting up my stopwatch just to watch the time myself. So again, good afternoon. It's unfortunate, Madam Mayor, it's unfortunate that we wake up this morning and our city's all plastered across the news with negative stuff. It's very unfortunate for us. I stand for the police department, and we support them in every manner. We pray for them for their safety. It's unfortunate what's going on. I still need to go on about my business and discuss what interests our city. I'd like to talk about some things that were brought up and responded on comments from the city regarding our handball court issue, which is an ongoing issue. And again, what was said was, you know, the development of a set of construction plans of these courts procured a grant writer and applied for grant funds to construct these courts, submitted an application, et cetera, et cetera, and funded a program for two months at the Roosevelt Handball Courts to gauge community interest. My question to you, council members, is how much or how many residents have to be required for interest? I mean, what's the number? Because if I recall, if I recall, 4% of the population votes for council members. That's somewhere about 3,000 residents. How many residents are it going to take for us to get our handball courts back? You know, part of the news of all this stuff is going on is I really think our residents don't have no recreation to get involved with. Me, myself, I'm getting ready to get together with all my friends here at home to watch the Lakers and the Dodger games. It's unfortunate you girls ain't, don't get to watch that, for those of you who are interested in sports. But I mean, it's unfortunate that we have nothing for our residents. You know, we're getting ready to get out of this pandemic. People want to go outside, and the last thing I think we should do is put our residents inside that gymnasium. You know, it's the one thing that I think is against us. The only thing that should be going for is the handball courts. It's outdoors. We don't have to have no lead mandated, Lee, come take care of us or watch over us. You know, that's the whole part about why I think it's important for us to get our handball courts back. Now, why is it that when you started the futsal courts, nobody showed up for the futsal courts yet you had money to start that? But when we want to get our handball courts, we have to go through all these regulations and stipulations, or show up at a school that's closed, when in fact, I'm sure it was a council member that-
Mr. Llanes, your time has expired.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Llanes. Another caller?
Good evening, this is the city of Paramount calling for Gurdeep Kar. I'm sorry, is somebody else on? Gurdeep, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. I can barely hear you. We're going to need you to speak up. We're calling regarding your request for public comment at the Paramount City Council meeting. You're being broadcast live to the city council. You'll be given three minutes, and I'll give you warning when you have 20 seconds left. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Good to hear you make the call. I am calling today just to express, again, my disappointment, and it's troubling times all around. It's troubling times when we have no justice for Breonna Taylor, when we have Trump rallies happening right across our city borders in the city of Downey, and it's troubling for a community of color that doesn't see itself fought for or advocated for. And because we have in Paramount not done that yet, I would like to dedicate the rest of my time as a moment of silence for Breonna Taylor. as a moment of silence for Breonna Taylor.
Thank you for your call. We can move on to the next caller.
Good evening, this is the City of Paramount calling for Fred Becerra.
Speaking.
Hi, Mr. Becerra. This call is regarding your request for public comment at the Paramount City Council meeting. You're being broadcast live to the City Council. You'll be given three minutes to make your comments, and I'll give you notice when you have 20 seconds left. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lemmons, Vice Mayor Olmos, and councilmembers. Our city stands-- Oh, I guess I'm on delay.
Mr. Becerra, you'll have to turn off--
Well, I apologize. Let me go and lower that volume. Okay. Our city stands close to the advent of the initiation of the West Santa Ana Metro Light Rail Line. Yet, I see Paramount as not quite being prepared compared to neighboring cities to take advantage of possible shoppers and tourists in the way that Southgate is with the Azalea Center and Southgate Park with their-- or Southgate with the park and the facilities in Bellflower with the parking structure and the great boulevard that they have downtown. Now, granted, they had a lot of the infrastructure already there. But I believe that Paramount can take a great advantage with all that's coming in to be able to drive perhaps events, something that can deliver the unique Paramount spirit to the gateway cities and beyond, to attract those customers, increase that tax base, make things more abundant for our community. I just-- with the way that things are right now with that shopping complex on the southwest corner near the theater, it's not very well set up, unfortunately. There's a lot of parking in the back, but yet you have to go around the gate to get to the front. There's no door to get through that little area. The parking is very diminished on the front side. Perhaps there can be some ways to go and look at the future and still keep those business owners who work very diligently to be there to remain there. I was thinking perhaps-- I don't know if it's legal or not-- is cryptocurrency perhaps to help fund these kinds of massive infrastructure projects legal? I mean, I don't know if the city can do that. But if it is possible, perhaps that can be looked at to not increase-- not cause a bond-- or cause a bond to need to be placed in order to make that kind of shift. But I think that if we can perhaps-- I don't know-- receive fees or perhaps those cars that get confiscated--
Becerra, you have 20 seconds left.
That maybe those cars can be sold for cryptocurrency and whatnot to build the city's coffers and more. Thank you so much for your time, councilmembers, Mayor Lemmons, Vice Mayor Olmos.
Thank you for your call.
Mayor Lemmons, the last caller actually just called in to rescind their request. So they won't be--
I'm sorry, the last caller what?
The last caller just called in to rescind their request, to take back their request to speak.
So now we'll move over to the written public comments, Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Luce.
Thank you. The first comment is from Paramount resident Katrina Hamel. "I called the Recreation Department on Monday to find out if or when Paramount outdoor playgrounds are going to open. They said they remain closed, but to call back after the October 6 City Council meeting as it will be discussed then. I do not see this item as being on the agenda. Can the City Council please move to reopen outdoor playgrounds and restrooms associated with them? Last week, the state of California Governor Newsom announced that outdoor playgrounds may reopen with certain COVID restrictions in place. Long Beach and Lakewood have already opened their outdoor playgrounds and restrooms. It would be wonderful and so beneficial for parents and children if Paramount can do the same."
Could you hold on that for a minute? Can we get an update on that?
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, as the residents indicated, the state of California has provided guidance on a possible reopening of playgrounds-- outdoor playgrounds. And the county of Los Angeles has actually then followed suit and provided their version of those reopening guidelines for outdoor playgrounds. And actually, it also includes outdoor fitness areas as well. So we're currently working with our neighboring cities to find the best practices that we can employ to reopen the playgrounds. Because when you reopen them, we need to make sure that we have proper sanitation protocols through our Public Works team to keep the playgrounds cleaned and sanitized. We have to provide an outdoor sanitization station for people to use and sanitize their hands. We have to get proper signage for the playgrounds. And again, a lot of it is based on self-compliance, that signage needs to indicate to the residents that how they need to conduct themselves to safely use that equipment. And so we're currently working on those-- that signage, that equipment, so we can actually reopen our playgrounds. And then there's the compounding issue of whether or not we reopen the restrooms in partnership with that. And so we're looking at all that. And with Public Works and Public Safety, and we should have a plan real soon.
And so what's real soon?
Well, I'm looking-- we're meeting tomorrow as a staff, and we should have an answer probably after tomorrow's meeting to how we're going to proceed to get them reopened.
Have an answer by when? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Again, our staff meeting is tomorrow. We should have an answer as to how we can proceed and get all that. Again, we need to get that equipment in place. So I need to find out how long it's going to take to get that signage and that-- those sanitization stations. So the other cities that we're talking with, they were able to do it pretty quickly. So I'm hoping we can do it pretty quickly as well.
Okay, so hopefully that can take place if everything's able to be done safely before we have another meeting. So we could maybe, once we have a timeline in place, maybe do some social media on that to update the residents so that they don't have to wait for another meeting to hear about it.
We absolutely will do that. Once they're ready to open, we can absolutely do social media broadcasts.
Even when you have the projected timeline? You know, instead of-- like, if it's going to be three weeks from now or a month from now, then we could say, you know-- because I want you to have, of course, the time to meet with staff and find out what needs to be done to safely open. And then maybe you can get a timeframe on the sanitation stations and the signage and put that out there. You know, the estimate is three weeks. The estimate is two weeks, just so that there's some kind of gauge out there for the public.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We will certainly do that. And yeah, I'm not anticipating it to be three or four weeks, no.
Not anticipating?
Not.
No, it should not take that long for us to get the signage and--
That would be great. That would be great. But as always, you're doing a great job in making sure that we do it safely, and that's our priority.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Lemmons, may I add to that?
Yes.
Dave, you know what? There was a question too about for Salud Park. Are we considering opening it in the morning instead of in the evening until we can get this situated for the opening of the other parks?
Yeah, I mean, so we did choose that hour. And the thought was, again, as people come home from work--
Right.
--that they'll have an opportunity to use the park. We do have results. I mean, we do have attendance for the last week or so. Yeah, it has been very sparsely used. So yeah, we're going to look at that. We're going to look at it for maybe another week. And then if-- if, in fact, the evening hours are not an attractive set of hours, we will shift those over to a morning set of hours.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Just to also note that I did respond to that resident by email to let her know that we are working diligently to get our playgrounds reopened.
Wonderful. Thank you, David. Any other emails?
Yes, one more.
Okay.
"As a four-year resident of Paramount, I am reaching out to the city regarding parking issues all along San Juan Street, San Carlos, and El Camino. As a property tax-paying resident, I find it absurd that I have to scavenge and scout for parking on the street. It is true that I have a driveway, and I park there 99% of the time. But for times when my husband does yard work or we'd like to have people over, we have to race and win parking spots that are being taken from people who live over at the trailer park. It really isn't fair that they treat our streets as parking garages for their extra vehicles. As soon as the street sweeper comes on Wednesday or Thursday morning, a majority of the cars will stay parked in the same spot for the whole week until the next street sweeper day. If people were consistently moving their cars, there would be absolutely no problem. But the fact that they stay there all week long, taking a parking space that can easily be used by more than one person is not fair. I would like some type of parking permit for the residents of our streets or even heightened parking patrol to manage this nuisance. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. And Adriana, you'll follow up on that? All right. Thank you very much. And that's all, Heidi? Okay.
Yes.
So we're going to move on to the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Go by Olmos, second by Aguayo. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quera Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Okay, next is Old Business, Item 9, Ordinance Number 1137, adopting citywide regulations for mobile food and ice cream vending vehicles.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. We're-- this is our second go-around edit. We're bringing this back to you with some changes. As you may recall from two meetings ago, we have nothing on the books that regulates food trucks as of right now. So at the moment, there are literally no restrictions on mobile food trucks. So they can go pretty much anywhere they want to in town. At our first attempt, we tried to balance the needs of our brick and mortar restaurants with the entrepreneurial spirit that some of the food truck owners bring to this industry. The council, if you recall, requested some changes be made to the ordinance, and those changes are before you tonight. And again, this is something that we could-- if you're still not ready, if you still want more refining of the ordinance, that can take place as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Planning Director, Mr. John Carver, who will handle the ad. John?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and councilmembers? At its meeting on September 1st, the City Council reviewed regulations for mobile food vendors on public streets and private property. After reviewing the proposed regulations, the council directed that several changes be made. Looking first at general provisions, the ordinance was clarified to make it clear that these regulations do not apply to mobile food truck vendors at city-sponsored special events. Looking at public streets, the following changes were made. Clarification was made that mobile food truck vendors are only permitted on public streets in commercial and industrial zones. This will prevent mobile food truck vendors on residential streets. Also changed was the maximum time that a vendor can locate in one place on a public roadway, and that was changed to four hours from the originally proposed two hours. A third change was that the distance that a vendor must be located from a restaurant was reduced from 500 feet to 250 feet. Here's a look at Casa Cabina. We looked at this last month with a 500-foot radius around it. This just shows a 250-foot radius. And then here's more of a practical view of what you would see maybe throughout the city. So here we're at Paramount Rose Crayons, and you can see the multiple 250-foot radiuses around numerous restaurants. And as you can see, a food truck could only park on North Paramount Boulevard and then to the west on Rose Crayons in between-- in between two restaurants there. So that's just an example of one part of the city to give you an idea. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm messing up my slides. I apologize. Okay. Other changes to the regulations on public roadways include expanding the definition of an ice cream truck to include shaved ice or iced snow cone products and that an ice cream truck could be parked on a residential street for one and a half hours for a private event at a home. Changes to the regulations on private property include expanding the hours that a mobile food truck vendor can locate on a property from two hours to five hours, allowing food truck hours to be expanded at the discretion of the Planning Director. Also changed are to allow for one table and one chair for individuals with disabilities. And the number of mobile food trucks permitted on private property would be based on the surrounding uses, the number of approved food truck vendors on a single property, the number of vendors on surrounding properties, and any violations that a food truck vendor may have against these regulations. And these guidelines and regulations will help to prevent an overconcentration of food truck vendors in any one area. And we're recommending that you introduce Ordinance 1137, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor, before we take questions, we do have public comment too. So just let us know when about you'd like those to be heard.
I'd like those before we move into discussion.
You got it. Do we have-- we have two verbal, and Ms. Luce, we have three written. Okay, so we'll handle the verbal first.
Hello?
Good evening, this is the City of Paramount calling for Alicia Anderson.
Alicia Anderson here.
Hi, Ms. Anderson. We're calling regarding your request to speak on Item Number 9 regarding citywide regulations for mobile food and ice cream vending vehicles. We'll give you three minutes to speak, and I'll give you 20 sec-- I'll give you notice when you have 20 seconds left. Your time starts now.
Actually, I am speaking on Item Number 10, the revised program partnership for use of courts.
Okay, in that case, we will call you back.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Mr. City Manager, I see both comments are for Number 10.
For Number 10, okay. So then we'll go over to the written comments then for Item Number 9.
Thank you, I have three. "My name is Lizette Garcia. I live in Paramount. I am writing about Item 9, Ordinance 1137. I am asking the City Council to vote yes on this item with one change, to extend the hours of operation to at least midnight because it provides variety with no obstructions or issues to anyone. That parking lot is empty most of the evening, and it's refreshing to see the space being used positively and not just for random people parking there to do miscellaneous things. It is a safe alternative for people to not have to resort to leaving the city in search of another option late at night." That concludes the first comment. The second comment is from Mike Panish, and he lives in the city of Los Angeles. "I am writing in for Agenda Item Number 9, Ordinance 1137. I'd like to start by thanking the Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, as well as the City Council for this opportunity to speak once again. Unfortunately, I could not call in this time due to a prior commitment, but feel free to reach out to me with any questions you may have. As a longtime food truck business owner, I understand what it takes to make it in this business. Currently, I have several trucks throughout the county of Los Angeles, and all are in good standing in the cities they operate in. Today, you are taking the first step towards helping us to start working legally in your beautiful city. I commend you for doing this and applaud all the hard work you and your staff have done up to this point. At the same time, I respectfully must ask that one minor change or amendment be made. I ask that you extend the hours of operation to at least 12:00 p.m., midnight, if not for everyone, at least for those vendors on private property. This change will ensure at least the opportunity for these small businesses to be successful. Without it, they are doomed. At the very least, you will be attracting food trucks that won't be invested in the community that they are serving because of the limited hours of operation. These limited hours will attract vendors that will only be able to earn a few hours and won't be committed to the location, its cleanliness, its customers, your residents, and the city. Whereas, if you extend the hours, vendors will be able to make a living and be committed to the location and will build a customer base and be invested in the city. Food trucks continue to be extremely popular with society and especially during these times of the pandemic. Food trucks offer a wide diversity of global and ethnic options. They are also extremely appreciated for their speed, price, and most importantly, their availability. The one thing that stands out the most during this pandemic is how our lives have changed and how our schedules have changed. People are working different hours and from different places. Kids are home all day, and that has forced us to make changes in our lives. From my experience, people enjoy the opportunity to just get out in the car and go grab a taco or churro or Asian fusion bowl, for that matter, at any time of the day, but especially for dinner. This is why I feel that mandating the food trucks to close by 9:00 p.m. just doesn't work. Most folks are working late-- later into the evening. Students are staying up later studying. Even before the pandemic, folks wanted to eat later, even if it was just for a late-night snack. I have many years of experience doing what I do, and my busiest hours of operation tend to start around 9:00 p.m. That is when I make the majority of my sales. That's when the police officers start coming. That is when I make the majority of my sales. That's when the police officers start coming. That's when the nurses start coming, and that's when the essential workers who are risking their lives every day and night to make sure we are protected from harm and danger. At the very least, we can be there to feed them when they are hungry. I want to close by asking for your much-needed support in making this small change to the ordinance in order to make it successful. We look forward to working with the city and its leaders in providing its constituents the best possible service we can. Thank you for this time.
That's all, Heidi?
For that comment? Yes, ma'am. There's one more, though.
Oh, okay.
My name is Henry Casas. I live in the City of Los Angeles. I work, play, and visit many friends in the City of Paramount. I am writing in today about agenda item number nine, the food truck ordinance. As a single father of two young adults and a full-time worker with hours that go into the night sometimes, I really enjoy the options that food truck vendors offer me and my family. The variety of foods one can find in these trucks, the price, and most importantly, the availability is really what differentiates them from your regular, old-fashioned, brick-and-mortar restaurant. During this pandemic, we have really seen the effects that COVID-19 has had on our lives. Even if you haven't been infected, it has changed the way we live. I mean, even drive-in movies are back in fashion big time. For those that say that food trucks compete with brick-and-mortar restaurants, for the most part, is not true, at least from this customer's point of view. When I'm deciding where to eat, there are many factors I take into account. How much time do I want to spend? How much money do I want to spend? What do I feel like eating? Lastly, what's still open? If I have time and I want to sit down and enjoy the ambiance, I'm going to a brick-and-mortar. If I'm in a hurry, don't have a lot of money that week, and it's late at night, I'm going to a food truck. It's money that I would have not spent at the restaurant. At least, that's me. This is why I'm asking you tonight to amend the ordinance, to extend the hours of operation to at least midnight so those who work late stay up late, or would just like a place to eat at 11:00 p.m. at night because they get the urge to. Please amend and vote yes. Thank you. That concludes the comments, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Heidi. We've had our staff report. We've had some comments. Is there a discussion on this item or comments from any of the council members?
I have some.
Yes, you have something, Velma?
Yes.
Okay.
My main concern is that I approach several businesses, businesses have approached me, and I'm really concerned with the 250 feet. I think it needs to go back to the 500 feet. Also, these business owners, restaurant owners, are really concerned about their business. They're really suffering right now. They're going through great challenges. They have to pay workers' comp. They have to pay, they have to lay off someone for unemployment. They have to pay property tax. They have to pay, if they lease a building, they have to pay for the lease. And, you know, water and other, now with the epidemic occurring, you know, the cleanliness, you know, and staying six feet away. I'm really taking into consideration the businesses. I'm really feeling for them. And it's really touching because I've spoken to them. I've gone to their businesses. And to be approached by a business owner and tell you what they've gone through is very touching. And I know that we need changes in the City of Paramount. If there was a designated area where you're going to put these catering food trucks, that'd be fine. I'm for that. If it's going to be a pilot program for a few months and let's see how it goes, that'll be fine. I can understand if a catering truck comes to a private party, or an ice cream truck comes to a private party. I can see that for right now, this situation, the things that are occurring at this present time.
Thank you, Velma. Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to also comment something, and I'm almost on the same page with you, Velma. I've also reached out to a lot of businesses. Actually, the night after our council meeting, I touched bases with three restaurant owners. We had some great dialogue. I just want to say thank you for the great dialogue, you guys, of just explaining where you guys are coming from. But, you know, some of them also said, hey, Brenda, I also understand, you know, that we need to make some changes in the city. And also, what do the residents want? You know, I get it. It's the businesses, the residents. It's all of us together trying to move the city forward. So I do agree with you, Velma. I do want to also move it back to the 500. But my question is to you, we have 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Isn't it at the discretion of the planning director for timing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
On private property?
Yeah, that's right.
Correct. Correct.
The ones on the street, it stick with the timeframe.
That is correct, 8 to 9.
Yeah. Okay. Anything from you, Ms. Aguillo?
Yeah, I've been really thinking about this one. I'm just, I mean, I'm huge on supporting our local businesses. And so I actually started to research, you know, SB 946, and, you know, how long has it been in place and why, to just really learn about it. And we can't, there's nothing that we can do per se to avoid this. You know, the food trucks, they are coming. They are here, and we have to allow it. So we do need to come to some, I don't want to say, you know, meet somewhere in the middle with our brick-and-mortar businesses because, yeah, we received, you know, letters and calls and emails. But again, you know, Paramount is known to be business-friendly. And so with that, you know, we have to find a way to incorporate these food trucks that are wanting to come in. And it's really interesting, actually, because I thought about that 500-foot, you know, and I thought about going back because when you look at 250 feet, it's really not that much. So I had thought about that. And not all areas. I look at my neighborhood, and, yeah, you know, of course, you know, that's where Casa Cabina is, and we have Tams and Alondra Hot Wings. There's a cluster of restaurants and eateries in that area. But that's not all of Paramount. So there are other locations, and there are those private locations that, you know, can be looked at. So I'm definitely, you know, something I had thought about, going back to the 500-foot, you know, rule. I think that night, it was just, the number sounded like a lot, but then, you know, when, you know, taking it back and looking at it, it really isn't, is not that much. And the 250 feet, it won't really help our current restaurants. You know, we already saw, you know, Pizza Press had to shut their doors. They're already dealing with a lot. So we need to find a way to work with our brick-and-mortar locations as well as the incoming food trucks.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguillo. What I'm hearing is that you're all okay with the ordinance as written with the exception of the 250 feet. We would like to extend that back to the 500 feet. Is that correct? Was there any other part of the ordinance that you want to change?
I have a question pegging.
Okay.
Okay, say it's 500 feet, and I live by Casa Alalitas. Okay. Within Casa Alalitas, then tell me 500 feet would be closer to Somerset Boulevard? Mr. Carver?
No, I don't think it would quite go, it wouldn't go to Somerset, north, right.
North.
No, no, it would not go to Somerset.
But then, are you going to park that catering truck in my residential area?
No, they're prohibited on residential.
So they have to go, what, to Paramount Boulevard or to Downey Avenue?
That's correct.
But if they're going to be within those 500 feet, then they're going to be, if they go closer to Downey, then there's going to be, like Councilmember Aguillo mentioned, there's going to be Casa Cabinas. There's going to be Alondra Hot Wings. There's going to be Tams. There's going to be that Rice Bowl. I mean, that's my concern.
Right.
It's being in that radius where we already have businesses established, and they're having problems.
So we kind of eyeballed it. So between, on Alondra, between Downey and Paramount, there may not be a place where you could do a food truck on a private property because they're all going to be within 500 feet of a restaurant.
And on private property.
Yes.
Only on the public roadway. That radius, the 250 or 500 feet, whatever, what you're discussing now only applies to food trucks on the street. Doesn't apply to private property. So as Mr. Carver said, on Alondra Boulevard between Paramount and Downey, it's very likely you won't be able to put any food trucks there at all with the 500 feet.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but on a private property, they'd have to have the property owner's permission anyway, and it's not likely that, and I would assume that, let's take a center where Alondra Hot Wings is. That center, it wouldn't be like Alondra Hot Wings that would give permission. It would be the company that leases all the properties. And they're not likely to upset the restaurant that's paying them rent.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
It kind of covers, yeah, them not coming in, taking all the, you know, clustered downtown business, you know, interfering with those businesses. I want to say takeaway giving because nobody knows the outcome, but answers the concerns of our business community, and I don't want them right by me because regardless of what the food truck owner says, the businesses that called us and wrote us said, oh, yes, it will have an impact. I've already experienced it. That's what I heard.
Right. Exactly.
So back to this, am I understanding correctly, then we're okay with the ordinance as written, taking the 250 feet for on-the-street parking and changing that to 500?
That is correct.
Is that clear? So we could have a motion with that change made to it? Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't in a public hearing. Okay, so if anybody wants to make a motion to approve this ordinance with the change that on-the-street parking would go from the 250, that is part of the ordinance now, to 500 feet, then we could move forward. Anybody want to make that motion?
And this is a public hearing?
It is?
It is.
No.
No, it's not. Just says ordinance number 1137.
I'm sorry. You're right. I was looking at number 11.
Well, that's okay. I appreciate that you're as confused as I am.
Me and Andrew.
Guys, and also, I mean, if you want a table, you want our discussion, you want anything, that's fine too. But if we've arrived at what we're comfortable with, it's the appropriate time to make a motion with that change.
And I just do want to point out one more question Mayor Lemmons had. I just, again, we really need to watch this, you know, that we don't get overwhelmed with food trucks, that we're, you know, having public safety also be a part of this. Because again, this is going to be something new for us to try, but we have to just make sure that all departments are on deck, like monitoring this. I just wanted to add that, Mayor.
Yes, I, yeah, because I know one of the concerns that was expressed to us is that, you know, those food trucks can take over really quickly. And so we did explore putting a cap on that. And the feedback that we got from staff is it would be good for us to monitor it for a while, and then we could always bring it back if we needed to, if we found there was a big influx.
Yeah, and that would be a cap for food trucks on private property because according to the city attorney, we can't regulate food trucks, the number of food trucks on the street. So that's why we have the radiuses in place.
We can't regulate how many come in, but we can regulate the distance they are from our existing facility.
Correct. But on private property, we can regulate the total number of permits that we allow. So we'll definitely keep an eye on it, and you're absolutely right. We didn't want to come up with an arbitrary cap right now because we don't know what 20 would look like, or 25, or 15. So once we see them, how many we get, and kind of play that and get the feedback from the council, please tell us, as Vice Mayor Almost mentioned, if you do see a little bit of proliferation, you know, coming, then we'll put the brakes on, come back to you. Okay, here's where we think the cap ought to be, and then we can go from there.
Okay, so once again, this incorporates all of the changes that were discussed at the last meeting. And having some time to think about that, it's pretty much the consensus that we should move the 250 back to 500 on the street. We are okay with the private property as written, and we are okay with the changes that have been put into this ordinance that we discussed at the last meeting. With that, we can have a motion. Do you have another question, Velma?
Yes.
Please.
I have another concern. Okay, so you're saying there's no limit to who, where they're, I mean, on the streets, on?
Yes.
As long as it's not private. I mean, they're allowed on private property. You can set a limit. But on property out on the streets, not being private, you don't know how many we're going to have.
Right.
So like Councilmember, I mean, excuse me, Almost mentioned that we're going to have someone monitoring and taking care of that. Then what's going to happen if a situation where you have 10 of them? And are we, I mean, like?
Well, if it's on the street, my understanding is we can't limit them. And also, it's not like we can ban them. We have to come up with an ordinance that allows them.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. That's correct.
Yes, so we're doing the best we can do with the parameters that were set for us and still taking into consideration the feedback we got from our business community. With that, do I have a motion on this ordinance with the caveat that we change the 250 to 500 for the street allowance?
So moved.
Second.
I think that was Quer Stalings that moved?
I did.
Boy, I would have swore it came from those two. Everything echoes in here. Moved by Vice Mayor Almost and seconded by Aguillo. Do I have that correct?
Yeah.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quer Stalings?
I'm?
Yes. Vice Mayor Almost?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to item 10, and I know we got a couple callers on that item.
Yes, we do.
We'll have the staff, we'll have the staff report first, and then we'll move on to the calls, okay?
Definitely. This is also something that we are bringing back to you. We brought this before you in March. At least, I believe, two council members that are here with us tonight may remember this. It's an agreement that we want each of the sports league, youth leagues to sign. What the agreement does, it basically sets the standard for the youth groups and allows them to continue to have exclusive use of the city-owned fields at our parks. We really consider the exclusive use of these fields to be definitely a privilege. And so this agreement does set forth rules by which our fields and facilities can be used. It also states what the city's responsibilities are. We have certain things that we have to do as stated in this agreement, like maintain the fields, maintain the parking lots, things of that nature. So we do things and they do things. So it's just spelled out plainly in black and white into an agreement here. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Community Services and Recreation, Mr. David Johnson, who will handle the ad.
Thank you, John, Mayor. Councilmembers? So as John mentioned, we're bringing back the program partner agreement. It's now the revised agreement. And again, just as background, this is again to assist our independent youth leagues in their operations in providing youth sports in the city. Again, as John mentioned, we do provide various things for them to make sure they're able to conduct their programs in a safe manner. They do provide enormous value to our community because they are providing youth sports in a way that we, as a department, probably would not be able to do without their assistance. Now, the problem that has always existed is that there are very few written guidelines to guide this relationship. It is stuck as part of my institutional memory for being here of how these things should work. It is best always to put these rules of that relationship in writing, which is what we're trying to do here. So I can, we can take it away from my institutional memory and put it in writing and take away some subjectivity that can happen when it's just stuck in my head. So just to briefly go through what, these are slides that we did last time. There's four or five slides to just give you background. We won't spend much time with them. But these are our current written requirements, so there's actually not a lot of detail there. So what we're proposing to add gives that specificity, gives those details, and it does really more closely define what the responsibilities are in the relationship and how that should be communicated. So in this case, I think I skipped a slide. There we go, sorry. Again, they must maintain a 501(c)(3). It has to be a volunteer-based. They have to function with that 75% residency requirement for all their seasons. They cannot sublet the fields. We're giving them a permit to them, not to another group outside the city. And then we require that, again, we're a recreational department. We're a city that values giving people equal opportunity for play. So we want to make sure that they, all these leagues provide equal access and opportunity for players. It is no fun to be on a team and you don't get off the bench. And so that's what some, it's an important quality that we want to see in these leagues. Some other items here to point out is, again, they also have to assist us in maintaining the field space with regard to reporting of issues and picking up their own trash, no political activity. And again, one of the big things for us is before they start, we need communication from them as to what their practicing game schedules will be so we are able to accurately allocate field space. And then, again, as, we want to make sure they're complying with the rules as well as, obviously, they can make sure that we're complying with our side. So we will always go back to our Parks and Recreation Commission, provide a financial report of their operations and how they have functioned within the agreement, and obviously, how we have functioned within the agreement, and make sure that we have an opportunity to address any issues through the Parks and Recreation Commission. the Parks and Recreation Commission, instead of just working with the Recreation Department itself. And then, a big piece here is changing the direct subsidy to what we're calling now an Every Child Play Scholarship Program. Again, the effort here is to move the money away from a direct subsidy and more directly to those financially, those families that have a financial issue that they're not able to afford what would be normally the fees. So we want that money to go directly to those families instead of broadcasting them out widely to the league. This chart shows you that in FY '20, that was their last year of maximum of direct funding eligibility. In FY '21, that's now the first year that they'll go down to half available of funds, so every dollar that is not going to that direct subsidy now is going into the scholarship fund. So there is no loss of money. And then that scholarship fund, as again, if a boy or girl playing baseball needs a scholarship, we would then find out what they're able to pay the league to pay their fees, and then we would cover the difference. So that money still flows back to the organization, it's just through a different mechanism now. We do have an issue because of, obviously, the FY '20 season kind of got canceled because of the pandemic, and so the council did allow us, in the FY '21 budget, we combined the amount they had available to them in FY '20 with the amount they have available in FY ' '21, so each league is actually available, has available to them $15,000 in FY '21 when they run their spring seasons. So we'll bring something to the commission to make sure there's a mechanism in which they have a higher opportunity to get to that full $15,000, and so we'll be bringing that to the commission. We're looking at something like, right now, the structure is they get $55 per eligible player that lives in Paramount or is a POSD student. We would request that we move that number up to, say, 75, so they have a greater chance to maximize their use of that, those funds. And then finally, in FY '22, that funding, direct funding goes away completely, and all the money goes into that scholarship program to support financially needy families. So the original program partner agreement was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission back in February. We did have attending at that meeting was the West Coast Rebels and Paramount Girls Softball. Everyone was invited. These are the two groups that showed. The commission at that time recommended approval. We then brought that item, that program partner agreement, to the council on March 17th. Seems like a long, long time ago. The changes that the council at that time requested on the original agreement are listed there. The primary one was termination and suspension of any program partner. The council very clearly identified that they need to make sure that you're the final arbiter of any decision regarding suspension or termination. So the process will always work its way through the Parks and Recreation Commission and eventually to council for final arbitration of any decision. The other item was paperwork timelines. We do have timelines for the leagues to turn in their paperwork. It's requested that we provide some timeline that we, the city, would have to get back to them about permits, so we've added that in now. And then there's just a direction from the council to go back to the leagues to clarify the issue of direct subsidy versus scholarships. So following that direction from council, we went back to the youth leagues in July, and we had discussions as to what the program partner agreement, how it changed from February. We did get comments, written comments, from Paramount Youth Soccer Organization. We took those comments and we did address them with the city attorney, and we actually also had them reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee on the youth leagues. The city attorney and both the subcommittee had no, gave us no direction as to make any changes, though the city attorney did indicate that if we did want to drop the requirement for workers' compensation insurance, we could do that. We also, as staff, we reviewed that agreement again. We did identify that one of the sections that deals with who can get paid, so again, these leagues have to be volunteer-based, but we wanted to make sure it was clear in there because it really wasn't, that obviously they can use their funds to pay for referees, umpires, things of that nature. But also, if they had to contract, wanted to contract with a professional who could come in and do coaches' training, or could do specific instruction for the students that volunteer coaches themselves couldn't do, that isn't allowed use. So we did clarify that, and we made it more broad for them, and for the allowance of the city attorney, we did drop the workers' compensation requirement. We then took that now, again, changed package of the program partner agreement back to the youth subcommittee. They recommended that we move it to the plan, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, which we did, and the Parks and Recreation Commission did approve it on September 16th, 2020. The program partner agreement, if the council approves it tonight, would become effective November 1st, and then it would be in place and communicated to the leagues for their upcoming spring season. And that, we are recommending that the city council approve or modify the revised program partner agreement for youth sports operating in the city of Paramount, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Would you guys like to hear from the callers first before we move into questions? Okay, let's hear from the callers.
Yeah, in the spirit of, you know, confusing 2020 already, I mentioned in item nine that we had two callers that, for this item, so we'll go ahead and get them on the phone now. One second.
Hello?
Good evening, Ms. Anderson?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, and this is round two of City of Paramount, so I apologize that for a second. We'll go ahead and give you three minutes, and we'll start the clock now.
Okay.
You may begin.
I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of item number 10, the revised program partnership agreement for youth sports leagues. I have closely reviewed this item, as I have been part of a subcommittee for the Parks and Recreation Commission, and then this agreement was reviewed by all of the Parks and Recreation Commissioners. This agreement provides a solid basis of conduct for the youth sports leagues within the city of Paramount. It has a clear, it has clear lines of responsibility for both the city staff and the youth leagues. This agreement will keep, sorry, the Parks and Rec Commission informed and aware of any issues that may arise, allowing these issues to be corrected in a timely manner. In the past, working with many other volunteer organizations, having governing rules in writing sets the ability to be fair. This will build a stronger relationship and partnership with the youth sports leagues in a city. By providing this, approving this item, it will create a uniform basis for everyone. Lastly, speaking about funds, setting up a scholarship program in place of giving money to leagues directly will help give our families who need financial support the opportunity to apply for funds. This money will then go be used for paying for league fees and things related to their sports, and in turn goes back to the leagues. So by having this scholarship program in place, we will have accountability for the funds, and in the future, we will be able to review and revise how the funds are spent depending on the needs of our community. Anyway, thank you. I'm driving right now, so I hope you'll have a good evening. Thanks.
Be careful, Alicia. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Be careful.
Hello?
Good evening, this is the City of Paramount calling for Elizabeth Madrigal.
This is she.
Hello, Ms. Madrigal, I'm calling regarding your request to speak on item number 10, revised program partner agreement for youth sports leagues. We'll go ahead and give you three minutes to speak, and I'll let you know when you have 20 seconds left. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am a current Parks and Rec Commission, as well as Alicia, but I'm also someone who led the Paramount Girls Softball League for six consecutive years. My endorsement of this provider, I mean, this program partner agreement comes from that particular experience. I'll start off by saying that during my tenure, we experienced great support and collaboration from both our city and our softball association counterparts, so we were very blessed and fortunate that we had that great working relationship. And so in addition to all the pros that Dave has outlined, all the great pros that Dave has outlined, I think it's just a great tool that level sets expectations on both ends. I think any league should appreciate that this partnership program is there, it should help their board, it should help with bylaws or anything that they need to establish, and it, I think it would just serve the purpose. That's all I have to say. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. And I assume that concludes, callers. Do we have any written?
Yes, ma'am, we have three.
How many did you say?
Three.
Three.
The first one is from Myra Lopez, who is a resident of the city of Fullerton but participant in West Coast Rebels. "We will help all families during this economic recession to participate in sports and activities that children so desperately need." That concludes the first comment. The next comment is from Christopher Jaquet, President of West Coast Rebels Youth Football and Cheer Program, located in Paramount, California. "As president of West Coast Rebels Football and Cheer Program, I would like to issue my full and unwavering support of the partnership agreement. When I first attempted to bring youth football back to the city of Paramount and its youth, there existed lots of concerns due to the actions of a previous organization. Youth sports creates unique opportunity for the city's residents that prove invaluable to both the individual and the community. The opportunity to learn a sport, the opportunity to create safe spaces, the opportunity to build lasting relationships, the opportunity for exercise, and most importantly, the opportunity for growth. The proposed program partner agreement enhances those opportunities and extends them to all the city's residents by creating a written agreement that outlines the responsibilities we have to the community as a whole, by mandating equity in playing time and setting a standard of excellence that the youth will visibly experience. Additionally, the scholarship portion of the partnership agreement allows for participants in our program and any future program which may come into existence to receive the council's assistance and ultimately thrive in the various youth programs that have been created within the community. The partnership agreement places the youth above politics, organization, and ego, and creates opportunity for most, for our most valued residents, which is our youth. Thank you for the opportunity to issue my support for our youth through your partnership agreement." And the final comment is from Carol Patterson. "I'm the cheer director for West Coast Rebels Football and Cheer for the city of Paramount. My cheerleaders will like to be considered for the partner agreement. It will be beneficial for the girls. The agreement would be the best, would be the girls could receive a scholarship, how it could help introduce the sport of cheering and grow the sport of cheering, and also create chances which may have not existed without it." Thank you. That concludes the comments. Madam Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Heidi. Discussion, questions?
Yes. I think this is great. I, being a former Parks and Recreation Commission and also being on the subcommittee, I, this should have been happening a long time ago, and thank you, David, for bringing it forward.
Isabel, anything?
Oh, it's a great thing, you know, to get stuff like this in writing. It's one of the best things that could have been done.
I just, Dave, how many sports organizations total will be a part of this agreement?
Uh, four, well, possibly five. We have Paramount Girls Softball, Paramount Junior Athletic Association, West Coast Rebels, PYSO, and then we were working with, prior to COVID, trying to keep Friday Night Lights going. They would be available to it. And then obviously with West Coast Rebels, the cheer portion of that would also be eligible for it.
Right. Good job, Dave. I think if me and Lisa had this, those six years back, we probably would have learned a lot, but good job.
I just have one question. You mentioned that with the money that the organization itself gets in 2021, that that could be used for things, and I heard you mention the word referees, and I recently had a conversation with a parent that said that they had been charged for the referees. Is that something that should happen if a child is on a scholarship from the city? Would like referee fees be covered? Are there actually any outside fees that the organization could charge the families for that are part of the scholarship fund?
That's a really good question. It's up to each league how they want to structure their fees. I did hear about that. I thought that it generally is, the fees for the umpires and referees are usually built in, but again, if a league wants to run it that way, they can, but you do bring up an interesting scenario where a family of financial need, that would be difficult for them to keep ponying up those fees each game, so that's something we'd have to take a look at.
Yeah, I would like an understanding, should I have a parent approach me that I, you know, and they tell me their child can't play because they can't afford it, and I tell them they can go on a scholarship, I would like the information or the assurance that it will cost you nothing. If you can't afford it, everything's covered, because I don't want, and I don't know if it's written into here, and I miss it because I'm probably the least in tune with sports that any human being can be, but are those things ancillary fees, you know, things that they can come up with and just tack on and charge parents for? I'd like that to be eliminated, because I know one of the reasons that we've honed in on this and tried to make a level playing field and fair for it is because we've had some issues with people charging fees that they didn't feel should be charged, and it differs from, you know, one organization to another, so, you know, I'd like to know that, and if so, then maybe we, you know, incorporate it like, well, if they're, if they're paying to play, then they charge those fees separately, then they do it, but if it's part of a scholarship, we don't expect these kids to have to pay for anything new that may be tacked on. Is that clear enough?
Yes, so I'd look to John and say that, you know, my suggestion is then that we, if the council so, would like to, we pass this, we approve this, we would come back to you to address that issue because you are bringing up something that this agreement does not actually address.
Okay, so if we approved this tonight, could that be added later? Is that what you're saying, as an addendum? Or we should make the motion that it, it does read where any additional fees would be covered by the scholarship? What's going to make it the easiest to work with?
Well, Dave, let me ask this first. If we are going to go back to the commission to compose the rules of, you know, the scholarship fund, because that's what, you know, that's already been approved, but we don't have any rules, and we want to develop, they'll bring it to the commission and then bring it to you for approval.
So that is going to be a separate?
So maybe at that.
Document.
Yeah, maybe.
Scholarship rules?
Can I add something, Dave? You know, shouldn't we check with the leagues, though, because when you register a child for signing up, the registration umpire fees is part of registration, so it should be indicated when you're signing up your child, all those fees are part of the application process, uniforms, insurance, uniform, you know, umpire fees.
Very true.
So we should check the way that they document their registration and make sure it's included.
Well, the parent did tell me that umpire fees were required from all the parents.
Well, we're.
I heard the same thing.
Do we know which group that was, Mayor?
Yeah, it was PYSO. Same here.
So when we take back to the commission, our plan is to go to our commission in November and then bring it to council in December of how the scholarship program would be structured. I don't think that's necessarily the appropriate place to identify how they define their fees. I think maybe that should be in the overall program partner agreement.
Agreement.
So again, I would like if, that we can approve this, so we can move this forward, and then with direction, though, to come back, again, I could probably come back in November, December, with the scholarship structure and how we would address this particular issue that you're identifying for me tonight.
So we could do an addendum to the?
Absolutely.
Agreement, is, right? Okay. Is that clear with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So we can make a motion if you're happy with the agreement as reads to approve it, and then if we identify issues with the scholarship, we'll address that in an addendum to this.
I motion for the approval and modify the revised program.
I'll second.
Okay, so moved by Quayre Stallings, seconded by Vice Mayor Almost. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Almost?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. We're going to move to item 11, a public hearing on ordinance 1139, amending ordinance number 178, a comprehensive. December with the scholarship structure and how we would address this particular issue that you're identifying for me tonight.
So we could do an addendum to the?
Absolutely.
Agreement, is right? Okay. Is that clear with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So we can make a motion if you're happy with the agreement as reads to approve it. And then if we identify issues with the scholarship, we'll address that in an addendum to this.
I motion for the approval and modify the revised program.
Well, second.
Okay. So moved by Quayle Stallings, seconded by Vice Mayor Almost. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Almost?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
We're going to move to item 11, a public hearing on ordinance 1139, amending ordinance number 178, the comprehensive zoning ordinance approving zone change number 237, changing, boy, when I started this, now I got to finish it. Changing the official zoning map of the city of Paramount from M1 Light Manufacturing to RM Multiple Family Residential at 6424, 6432, and 6530 Alondra Boulevard in the city of Paramount. And Vice Mayor Almost, if you could take over chairing this for me?
Sure, sure, sure. Appreciate it.
You guys will go ahead and start here from the staff. Give a staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor and Council. This, as Mayor Lemmons mentioned, is a zone change that would convert industrial zone property to residential. Most of it's currently residential anyways. This is actually related to a zone change that the council approved recently that will now make way for new homes to be built on Alondra near the 710 freeway across from Dominguez High School. So this is basically what you're going to see tonight are the properties that are around that particular area. So with that, I'll turn it back over to our planning director, Mr. John Carver, who will handle the item.
John? Thank you, Mayor. John and Vice Mayor Almost and council members. This item is a request to change the zone from light manufacturing to multiple family residential at 6424, 6432, and 64, 6530 Alondra Boulevard. This zone change would implement the general plan land use designation of multiple family residential. The planning commission recommended approval of this item at its September meeting. Here's a look at the properties outlined in white. You can see Alondra Boulevard to the north, Hunsacker Avenue to the right, and then Home Depot to the left. The council approved a zone change from light manufacturing to PDPS Single Family Residential several months ago for the properties that are outlined in blue. The zone change proposed tonight would bring this entire section of Alondra into conformity with the general plan land use designation of multiple family residential. Here's a picture of some of the residential properties that would be affected by this zone change. And more of the residential properties. And this is a warehouse that's located at the corner of Alondra and Hunsacker, also part of the zone change. Here's a look at the existing zoning, which is light manufacturing, highlighted in blue. This is a look at the proposed zoning, which again is multiple family residential. This is a look at the existing land uses, which include residential and light manufacturing. And here's a look at the general plan, which calls for this section of Alondra Boulevard to be multiple family residential. The zone change will be consistent with the general plan, land use designation of multiple family residential. The zone change will tie into the recently approved single family project at 6500 to 6510 Alondra Boulevard and will tie into the surrounding neighborhood on Hunsacker Avenue. The proposed zone change ties in with the city's efforts to protect residential uses through rezoning. The zone change allows all the uses to remain. The residential will become conforming, while the warehouse will be legal nonconforming. The warehouse use will be allowed to remain, and it's currently used for storage by the property owner. And we're recommending that you introduce ordinance 1139, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
John? I have a question. So the warehouse would just remain in between the new, the new single housing?
So the warehouse is on the corner. It would remain, right? And its use could continue as a warehouse use into the future.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So even though we're, I'm sorry, Mayor Lemmons.
I was just about to say, thank you for chairing. Go right ahead.
So even though it's being changed to a multiple family residence, the warehouse can still stay?
That's correct.
Because it's grandfathered in, is that?
Right. It's grandfathered in, legal nonconforming.
Okay. Okay. With that, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to give testimony in favor of this item?
No, there have been no comments submitted.
Anyone impose?
No, ma'am.
May I have a motion to close the public hearings?
Motion?
So second.
I have no idea where those came from.
Motion. Quayle, second.
Almost move, yeah, let's raise hands. Almost move, Quayle Stallings, second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Almost?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. And now I need a motion on the item.
I'll make a motion to move the item.
I second. Two. I'm two.
Moved by Quayle Stallings?
No motion by Aguayo.
Moved by Aguayo? Okay. So now we're going to do a one and a two. And seconded by Quayle Stallings, that we read by Ty Lonely, wait for the reading and introduce ordinance number 1139, zone change number 237, and place it on the next regular agenda for adoption. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Almost?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Okay. We're going to move to a public hearing on ordinance number 1140.
Yeah, I think it was probably easier to do the roll call vote when we were on the phone and when we had it.
I mean, if I don't see their mouth move, I have no idea where it came from. It's just kind of an echo. And I wouldn't think it, but you all sound the same.
That's funny. Yes, Mayor Lemmons and Council. This ordinance that is before you tonight, this next one, it's going to cover two items, gas station pricing and illuminated signs that you see in businesses' windows. Right now, gas stations are not permitted to have digital pricing on their monument sign. And businesses aren't allowed to have illuminated signs in their windows, even though we have a number of businesses that have those in town already, they aren't, aren't allowed. This ordinance, however, will allow both, and it will set regulations for both. So with that, we have a guest presenter, our planning, assistant planning director, Mr. John King. And John will tell us more about this item. John?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor Lemmons and council members. Happy to be here. And we'll kind of go through, as John mentioned, it's basically two parts. We're looking at updating gas station signs to allow the digital and window signs. And this is a ZODA. We call them ZODAs, Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment. And this is your opportunity to update the municipal code in terms of the, of land use in the code. It's chapter 44. And this would be in commercial and manufacturing zones citywide, and there are about 12 gas stations in town. The planning commission recommended approval last month, and the city attorney reviewed the draft ordinance and gives his approval as well. Recommends approval. So a little bit of background, we'd like to do background. Actually, maybe we can even go further back. The city council, kind of following along with, with other cities and trends in the 70s, early 80s, took a look at, at signs and really decided to do away with certain types. You know, you remember there were thermometer temperature types of signs, and for whatever reason in those days, they were just kind of, they went away. So now you go to 2013, and the city council at the time, they had the opportunity to consider allowing some very elaborate digital signs. So think downtown Los Angeles, LA Live, think Las Vegas, or Shibuya, Tokyo, that kind of thing. The council actually, actually denied it. You know, there aren't too many denials, but they decided that there were a few things. There was a nuisance based on the illumination. They thought it might be too bright. You're, you're, you know, I'm driving, I'm very compelled to look at these types of signs and, you know, the freeway, some of these signs are, you just can't take your eyes away. So that's really what the council thought on, on city roadways, it just wouldn't be a good idea for ever distraction and aesthetics. The word that came up was garish, a little, you know, garish or carnival-like. So here we are, we're seven years later. You know, trends kind of change and maybe some opinions. You'll recall last year that you approved, or this year, the digital billboard off the 710 that will soon be making its way to plan check, and you'll be seeing it before long. So we thought we'd come back with a less comprehensive sign proposal and make it, and more, a more refined, very limited type of proposal. So here are those two examples. So we're going to be looking at gas station monument signs and digital window signs. So just to recap on monument signs, those are the types of signs that are basically freestanding. You'll typically find them at the front of a property, maybe at a corner. And some folks call them tombstone signs or freestanding signs. And then there's some examples. That's an out-of-town Sinclair sign on the right. You might know this restaurant. It's on Somerset Boulevard. I won't say the name. Automobile service station. So we'll get into this at, to start off. In 1985, the city council adopted regulations for service station monument signs to allow pricing. That was to catch up with California law. You know, there's laws for transparency to make sure that we, when we fuel up at the pump, we're all paying the same dollar amount. So that, so we changed our code at the time to, you know, to throw in pricing as an element of these monument signs. So here we are to allow the option to convert to digital pricing. We've been contacted by a number of gas stations, and we've kind of held steady for the last few years across the board for digital types of signs. So this would be an opportunity to kind of catch up with what most cities are approving now. We did come up with some, some regulations, including for those signs to be static for at least four hours. And that might seem like a short amount of time. By four hours, we're kind of thinking back to the, you know, gas wars or the gas crisis of the 70s when prices were kind of changing. You might have seen some changes throughout the day. So we thought we should at least have some threshold. So must be static for four hours and would only be applicable to those monument signs, not, no digital pricing on the walls of a mini market or on top, on the fuel canopy, which you might find in other cities. And here we are in town. So you might recall that very recently, the SS Fuel at 15757 Paramount Boulevard, Paramount and Alondra, became a Sinclair gas station. You got the little dinosaur there. They've approached us. This is what they want to do. They have their existing sign, kind of a temporary with filler, and they're looking forward. They would love to have the, this digital opportunity. So it saves them staffing time to change, to manually change the prices. They basically just flip a switch. So just kind of take a pause there, just checking if there are any questions about gas station signs.
Your pictures. So, I'm sorry, Mayor, may I have, may I have the floor?
Yeah, I guess I'm just admiring Kermit.
Yes. Don't go wrong with Kermit.
You said that gasoline stations have approached you about this? Is that kind of why?
They have.
Okay.
Yes. And as a matter of fact, there is one, if you're looking closely, there's one unpermitted digital sign in town.
There is, right. Okay. And is there a permit application process for this to get done, or?
There is. Or as, like all signs in town, it does require a sign permit. And because these are also illuminated, they also take a building permit and an electrical permit. A building inspector would inspect for safety.
Anyone else?
And on to digital window signs. So these are the portable signs that are becoming a lot more popular. You could, they're getting lower in price, and a lot of business owners, they'll go to downtown Los Angeles warehouse districts and buy them very cheaply. They do a lot more these days. You can program them to scroll and do flips and tricks. So right now, it's unregulated. So what we're bringing to you is to bring order to chaos as they, they're kind of popping up. You know, there's probably 16, we've counted 16 right now. And I'll show you some examples in a moment. Right now, we're looking at, there are window sign regulations in general. So if you have, say, an open sign, or, you know, in this era of COVID, signs about wear your mask and that kind of thing, you could have up to 40% of a window area to have signs. So, you know, you take the length and the width of the sign, of the framed window, get the area, and 40% of that. So that's pretty much where we are now. And, but it's not, we don't have specific regulations for these digital signs. This would, like the other signs, assure a safer streetscape and aesthetics. So these would be required to be inside, installed inside a window, not be installed on the outside of a building and projected through the window. And we're looking for restricting down to 25% of a window area for these types of digital signs, LEDs. So combined with all other, these window signs, like the open signs or any kind of messaging signs, we're sticking with, we're proposing to stick up to that 40% maximum area. And also to change no more than every 10 seconds. We would, we don't want that quick change that could be very distracting to drivers and unsafe for pedestrians. We're proposing no scrolling, no flashing, no rotating, and only a, basically an immediate change per, per message. And also a limit of one of these signs per street frontage. So basically, if a, if a business has one side facing a street or parking lot, they would only be able to have one of these, choose a window. And if they're on a corner, say they have, you know, they're a corner suite or a standalone building, you know, one per, per side. Here you, here you go. Here's some, some examples. We can kind of walk through each ones, each of these. The top left is Downey and Rosecrans Northeast Corner, little shopping center. And you can kind of see, the interesting thing is, they're hard to, with our cameras, to take a good photo. You know, they're moving, and it's kind of hard to always capture the content. But you can see there, there's, there's an open sign, and this probably, I could see that it would, this would not work. It exceeds the 25% that we're proposing. So it would have to get moved, or they'd have to replace it with a smaller sign. The middle, that is near the subway, that's near the Starbucks at Lakewood and Alondra, the dental office that's been open for about a year and a half. And you can see that, that wouldn't work either. Another dental office at the top right, and there's that same restaurant here. It's a, this is a burrito message.
That kiss of the A before, right?
Yes. Just a kiss of the A. So you can tell it's rotating.
Changed.
It does catch your eye. Yeah, I could stand there and just stare at these. The bottom middle is the reloaded barber shop, 792 Rosecrans. That's by the, behind the Jack in the Box that Rosecrans in Paramount.
Yeah.
I think it just says, does it say reloaded? Yeah, reloaded. And at the bottom right is the building off Paramount Boulevard owned by a local business owner just south of City Hall.
Can we stay here for a moment?
Yeah, actually, here we go. Here it is in video. I think this might be a little helpful. So there's a little, it's just going to keep recycling. So I can go back if you'd like.
My question was just about, did you say that the ones in the prior pictures, like where the open sign was, that because of the percentage of the window, that would not be allowed?
That, that would not be allowed, right.
Okay. Can you go back?
Yes.
Because there's a couple more there.
So the open?
Would it not be the same thing for the one on the far right and the one barber shop, right? Yeah.
The only one that would essentially work?
And the dental, because it's still a little, are all of those then would not be allowed?
The bottom right most likely would work, because I could see that it's?
Top right is what I meant.
Oh, the top right?
Top right, middle, all the top row, actually.
Right. That's, that's a good way to put it.
Yeah.
Separate the, the top and the bottom. So you have some winners and some not winners.
Because that seems like the perfect place for them. So, I mean, maybe, I understand that you're going by window because it's divided by basically decorative, but probably wouldn't be when it encompasses the whole window. But I mean, when you think of some of these somewhere else, it doesn't even seem like it'd be appropriate for them, to put them somewhere else. So I'm just wondering about that.
Okay.
You know?
How we could kind of?
Yeah. Like, should it be all the window frontage, no more than all the window frontage instead of an individual window? Because I understand too, like in the past, when we had this before the digitals, it was almost too, because you're kind of blacking out the whole window to the store, which might be more like, let's go back to the dental one. It would seem like the one on the right and the left below the electronic one are illegal too. Is that correct?
The, yes.
They're covering the whole window.
Right. In this case, we most likely wouldn't issue permits per se, but just note to the property owners that they're in compliance. There's not really a, an installation, what's a way to put it? It's not a permanent type of a sign. You know, it's not glued or drilled into, it's just hanging.
Well, yeah, none of the three of those are. So are you saying that that makes a difference whether or not, if it takes up twenty-five percent, goes to whether or not it's permanent?
Oh, no, I think I was more thinking toward the actual permitting process about issuing a permit or not.
They wouldn't get a permit.
Right. I, example, I would, I would make an analogy to a home. So we issue permits for changing out a window. We don't issue permits for a fence in the front, although there are fencing regulations.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I must be a little confused. I don't understand what that has to do with the question that on the dental one, wouldn't all of the signs that are there right now in the windows be considered illegal or not within code according to what?
Not in compliance, right.
Right?
It wouldn't work. You're absolutely right.
And so I just don't know if we don't need some clarity on definition about things like signage in the past that we had a problem with was like non-translucent, let's say. So you would be blacking out windows with large signs. I know, for instance, I'm pretty sure in the case of these dental ones or that kind of screen printing where you can almost see through them, right? And then the same thing with the electronic moving sign, there's open space all about them. So it just seems like maybe the twenty-five percent, if it takes up more than that, is to pinholing with what's new out there.
Right. Well, you know what I would recommend is consider them as a, you know, at your pleasure, but to consider adjacent windows, maybe a window set, like, I wouldn't suggest, you know, there's a set of windows, then there's stucco, a wall, and then there's windows. Probably want to keep those separate, but a window set, maybe consider that as, as that would be what we would measure as the forty percent of that set of windows? Does that make sense?
No, I didn't understand that at all.
Yeah, I wish I had a, I could draw. Maybe that's the future of our presentations, live drawing. But.
But even what I said, let's go back to the dental picture. Did I not get a yes on the electronic and the, and the two signs on each side and even the printing that's on the windows? It looks like the whole front of that is out of regulation, correct?
You're right.
So then I go back to, if the type of signing makes a difference. Like if that was all opaque and you couldn't see through it, because that's like a screen print, you can almost see through it, it makes a difference in how visually appealing it is. So how do we get around with the technology and away from the percentages? Is there, you see what I'm saying?
Right. I see we're kind of getting into it.
I make this to anybody but me.
This is a great discussion. I think there's a bigger issue about window signs. There is, have been changes, that is a new, new product that's.
Well, let me ask you this. Could you do something along the lines of, they, are, are they, are, I think this goes back to what you said earlier, they're permitted or they're not permitted to put up window signs? Do they have to get a permit? Okay. So there is no process through the city right now for them to do it?
That's right. The only exception would be, I could think of is when there's a conditional use permit, something like the planning commission. There is a standard condition that kind of reinforces what's in the, in the code. But we don't require a.
So it really is kind of left up to the inspector's discretion when he looks at it anyway, because it's not like they have a permit process that allowed it. So when the inspector's out there, if he feels that it violates the ordinance, then it's up to him to cite it or request them to take it down?
There, yes, but I'm.
I'm, I guess inspector, by inspector, I would say code enforcement officers, correctly.
Probably more, more code enforcement or maybe a office manager.
Code enforcement would make these calls.
That's right, or neighbors.
And what I'm saying, and, and I would be great if we could leave it at, you know, their discretion for, for what was acceptable aesthetically, but, you know, that's not a good thing. And I'm just concerned about pigeonholing when we do that, you know? Because one would, would say, like, I look down at the one that says burritos with the lottery. And like the lottery sign takes up the whole thing, but that's not a clear sign, so it's not really pleasing to look at, it kind of detracts. Whereas the dental one is very nicely done, with the exception of the banner. I'll get rid of the banner. But because of the way that the signs are made. So there's no way to deal with in that. I mean, I'm okay with the electronic signs, I know what, that's what we're focused on now, but the percentage thing, I think is going to cause a problem because of.
I might turn to the planning director. We have talked about a more comprehensive look at the sign ordinance.
Right. If I could make a suggestion, I, I think I understand where the mayor is going. Maybe we could continue this and we could take a look at doing a percentage of, of a frontage, of an array of windows.
Yeah. And then some limitations on signage, you know?
Yes.
Like you said, like I'm trying to say here, like if it's a screen print, you know, to where there's some visual access instead of blacked out by a solid poster, that makes a big difference in what we're looking at.
Right.
So if we could just take those things maybe into consideration, because I don't think they existed maybe back when we originally said twenty-five percent of a window. And now we have to keep up with the new.
The marketing concepts have changed.
Sure, right. And I would like an opportunity, like in all these cases, just to take a.
So let's just focus on the electronic signs, Mayor, and move forward. I will do that.
Yeah, but, but great points. We, we really need to do a comprehensive look rather than.
Yeah, I think it's time to review it because I, I think it, it doesn't go with the times right now. All right, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, so, and I don't think we need to look at the little video again.
He made a video, we should.
But we made a video. So with that, I'll leave it at our, the staff recommendation is to introduce the ordinance, but I am available for questions and the planning director.
Well, did anybody else have questions?
I had a question. Just have a comment. I've noticed that several businesses out of our area and churches use them also, like the ones for the gas station. I've seen those and they seem to be getting more popular. Also, I, you know, POSD, Paramount Unified School Districts, there's some of the schools are using them too. So, but I'm for it. I, I would love to see an example, maybe a plain window, what a twenty-five, say, window this size and what, you know, twenty-five percent of that would look like.
We can, we can do that.
I would greatly appreciate, or even a larger window and then give me a twenty-five percent example. I would, you know.
So maybe when we bring it back for adoption, if it gets that far right now, that could be a pre, you know, presentation before the adoption, so that there's comfort and clarity in what they're approving.
Madam Mayor, the questions that you're all bringing up, I think are very, very good. I think it'd be better if we didn't take any action tonight at all. And that you gave some direction to the staff on what you would like to see, and then we can bring it back to you, especially with some pictures. And then you have a better idea to vote on an ordinance that deals directly with the issues you're talking about, rather than coming back with, before adoption and saying, hey, do we want to adopt it or not? This, this is something we can give to you, Brian Newell. I think, I think it would be better. Also, based on the conversation, the dialogue that you said, Madam Mayor, regarding the, the different type of signs and that, I think that's going to impact the digital signs too. And I think we're going to have to look at all those in consideration because the issue you're bringing up is more of opacity, rather than just, you know, the percentage is going to be dealing with opacity rather than just the sign itself. And so we want to look at that and bring a package to you so that you have a better idea where you want to go with this.
Does that present any problems for staff?
None.
I would prefer to see it as a package because I think we're dealing on a lot of different issues. Are you guys in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion to table the item?
To continue the public hearing, sir.
Public hearing and then we can bring it back. If it, if it takes too long, then we can, we can continue it, but give us the opportunity to bring something back and not have to re-advertise.
Okay, so we've had the staff report. We're going to move into stating that this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone to speak in favor?
No, Madam Mayor.
Anyone in opposition?
No, ma'am.
Motion to close public hearing.
What, we're can, were we going to continue the public hearing so you can hear this again at the next meeting?
So, yeah, if that's what I need to do.
Yes, please. I think a motion to continue.
So don't close and continue it.
Correct, we're continuing it.
Motion to continue the public hearing.
To the next meeting, I'm looking at the planning director.
Let me ask staff, how long?
No, I wouldn't do it to the next meeting. I would just say that we make, you make a motion to continue the public hearing. At some time, we'll bring it back to you if you.
It doesn't need to be continued to a date specific?
We can, we can say, we can say to a, I wouldn't make a date certain at this point because we don't know. I would just make a motion maybe not to exceed sixty days.
Two months, is that going to, does it need to be ninety?
That's fine, that's plenty of time. Yeah, that's plenty of time.
And we can always renotice too, Madam Mayor, just in case.
Okay.
So it won't be a problem.
So we need a motion to continue the public hearing for sixty days?
Yeah, and continue the item.
And to, I don't take care of it in the, on the next one, on the read and title, should do it all at once?
I would do it all at once.
Madam Mayor, we do have a question.
Yeah, just one point of clarification. I, from the, just for staff's purposes, are, is the council generally in supportive of the changes to the, the gas station signs to allow?
To the what?
The gas station monument signs to allow digital pricing. I got the feeling you're, you're okay with that part of.
I am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think actually the direction is kind of need to push it a little further. Okay, so we're going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing and continue the item for sixty days.
Yes.
Motion.
I motion.
Moved by Quayle Stallings.
A second.
Seconded by Aguayo. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item thirteen, a public hearing on the CAPR report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, moving on to financial reports. This is definitely a financial report that we have to do each year. It's required by HUD. And this tells us how we used our community development block grant funds for the year that just ended. So with that, I'll turn it over to our finance director, Ms. Karina Lou, who will handle the item. Karina?
Thank you, John. Good evening. Madam Mayor and members of the council, the item before you is the fiscal year 2020's CAPR, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. As a recipient of CDBG and Home Funds, we are required by HUD to conduct at least two public hearings per year. One is the One Year Action Plan, which is the budget, and the other one is the CAPR. That is the year-end report. What we are doing tonight is the CAPR. The CAPR evaluates each year if the city has met our goals and objectives that's set in our one-year action plan and the five-year consolidated plan. The purpose of our public hearing tonight is to seek public input for our progress. A public notice was published on press telegram on September eighteenth, and the CAPR documentation was made available to the public at City Hall, also on City website. Over two decades now, we are fortunate to continue receiving the CDBG and Home Funds, and they have become one of the most significant source of grants. In fiscal year 2020, the city expanded approximately $1.1 million in CDBG and Home Funds combined. For CDBG funds, we continued to use the resources to augment programs such as graffiti removal and co-enforcement. We also used the funding for fair housing services and commercial rehab projects. As for home funds, we continued using it to do residential improvement projects. Aside from the HUD-funded services and programs, city also used our own general fund money to pay for services and to support various organizations that benefit the community, and this all counted as bonus on this CAPR report. For example, the city has funded the ADA Evaluation and Transition Plan, and that finalized in the current year, in the fiscal year 2020. Also continue funding various groups such as the Children's Dental Clinics, Pathways, and Su Casa. When combining all funds overall, the city came close to meeting or exceeding the goals set in a one-year action plan and a five-year consolidated plan. This progress report also helps shape the goals and objectives of future consolidated plans. Before I wrap up the report this evening, wanted to point out that in the current year, the city also received CDBG CV money for COVID-19 mitigation. The next year's CAPR report will include the progress that we have made using the CDBG CV money. With that, it's recommended the city council conduct a public hearing and receive and file the fiscal year 2020 CAPR. That wraps up my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Karina. Are there questions at this time? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor?
No comments in favor, Madam Mayor.
Anyone in opposition?
No, ma'am.
And I have a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Olmos. Seconded by Councilmember Aguayo. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Can I have a motion to receive and file?
I make a motion, Aguayo?
So second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Aguayo, seconded by Councilmember Quayle Stallings. Thank you, ladies, that was really helpful. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item fourteen, appropriation of funds for contract planning services.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as with any downsized organization like us, you run into situations where there is a perfect storm. Whenever we have a vacancy and whenever there are special projects that just need to get done, things can pile up and we need assistance to get these things done. Such is the case right now in our planning department where we have actually a key vacancy at the moment, and at the same time, we're trying to catch up on some projects, namely the administrative actions for the metal-related businesses that are required to get done through the ordinance that was adopted a couple of years ago. In addition to this, to this planning consultant that we're asking for extra funds for, we'd like to reach out to the private industry to also give us some guidance and direction on how some future potential developments could look like in our downtown in the near future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Planning Director, Mr. John Carver, who will handle the item. John?
I'm sorry, for contract planning services. For the Planning Division of the Planning Department, we are looking at two different firms. The first firm is Tierra West Advisors, who would provide development services for several potential downtown projects. The second firm is Michael Baker International, who would assist in completing administrative actions for the metal related businesses in town. Tierra West Advisors would help determine viable uses and would help to develop conceptual site plans for potential downtown projects. Tierra West Advisors is a multidisciplinary development advisory firm that develops strategies to enhance the growth, vitality, and diversity of communities. Looking at Michael Baker International, as John stated several years ago in 2018, major changes were made to the zoning regulations in the light manufacturing and the heavy manufacturing zones. Part of these changes required metal-related businesses to obtain an administrative action that details the business operation, operations and requires a public tour or meeting. Then I want to just explain why we feel we need, have this need right now. So the Planning Division assists customers at the counter, over the phone, by email, and in the field. We're also, as the Planning Division, we prepare cases for the Planning Commission, the Development Review Board, and the City Council to review, such as the zone change that you reviewed earlier this evening and the code amendment regarding electronic signs. Right now, the, the Planning Division is also working on an update of the general plan and housing element, an update of the Clearwater East specific plan, a new specific plan for North Paramount Boulevard, and the environmental impact report for the World Energy Conversion Project. The department consists of two interns, one associate planner, the assistant planning director, and the planning director. Our associate planner recently resigned, and her primary responsibilities were working on administrative actions. So that's why we feel we have the need to hire Michael Baker and associates right now. We would utilize Michael Baker to complete the remaining administrative actions and to schedule the tours or information meetings. We have used Michael Baker in the past. In 2018, we had a contract planner in the office for several months, and we were very pleased with their services. We anticipate that the services from Tierra West and Michael Baker would not exceed $40,000 each.[1713.34] The city's purchasing policy for professional services allows the city manager to enter into agreements that do not exceed $40,000. And if either contract got close to expending $40,000, we would come back to the council for authorization to continue. And we're recommending that you authorize the appropriation of funding in an amount up to $40,000 for each contract for planning services in the fiscal year 2021 budget. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, John, can you tell me Tierra West? What other cities do they work with?
Oh, let's see. They've been in Pasadena, in Santa Monica. They've done some specific plans and conceptual site plans for those, for several cities in Southern California.
Okay.
They've also done work for the city of Downey, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you guys, and maybe forgive me, I'm just asking, but do they also help with the leveraging of public and private funding as developers?
Believe they have. Is that on their resume, John? I think they have.
Yes, they do have that ability.
They do? Okay.
Anyone else? Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Quayle Stallings. Seconded by, yes. Vice Mayor Olmos. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Move on to item 15, request for installation of a disabled parking zone at 8202 Gardendale.
Yes, our latest request for a disabled parking curb comes to us from the north end of town, as you mentioned, on Gardendale. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Ms. Adriana Figueroa, who will handle the item.
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, we received a request from Ms. Maria Aguilar for the installation of a disabled parking zone in front of her residence at 8202 Gardendale Street. This is due to limited accessible parking options in the neighborhood. Although the applicant, Mrs. Aguilar, is not the property owner, she has provided us with a letter from the property owner who supports this request. As you can see from this map, and as John has indicated, the applicant's residence is in the north area of town. It's actually indicated by the blue rectangle that you see on your screen. This is on Gardendale between Paramount Boulevard and Downey Avenue, and more specifically between Brock and Merkel. Our boundary line is actually the middle of the roadway on Gardendale, where the north side belongs to Downey, and the south side is Paramount. Here, as you can see from the image on the top right-hand corner, the property does have off-street parking available via a driveway in a garage, which is located in the back by the alley. However, these locations are not available to the tenant as it was indicated in the letter of support that we received from the property owner. Staff verified that there were no other disabled parking zones on the street. And if approved tonight, approximately 15 feet of curb in front of 8202 Gardendale Street would be marked for disabled parking only. Mrs. Aguilar has been informed that the designated disabled parking zone, if approved, would be available to anyone that possesses a valid disabled person placard to use. At their September meeting, the Public Works Commission recommended to the City Council approval of the request for this disabled parking zone. A notice indicating that the City Council would hear this item was sent to all properties on Gardendale Street from Brock Avenue to Merkel Street. No responses or feedback has been received with regards to this item. And with that, it is recommended that the City Council approve a request for the installation of a disabled parking zone in front of 8202 Gardendale Street.
Thank you, Adriana. Are there questions or comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the item?
So second.
Moved by Aguayo. Seconded by Quayle Stallings. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Next, item 16, consideration of neighborhood permit parking, Urgency Ordinance Number 1138 and Resolution Number 20029. And I'm assuming, Mr. City Attorney, those should be handled separately?
Yep.
Staff report, please.
This next item involves some cleanup work to correct an action that the council took on staff's recommendation recently. So this urgency ordinance before you will correct this. Additionally, we'd like for you to approve a resolution that would allow staff to initiate a request for neighborhood permit parking that may come up in the future. The request by staff would still need to go before the council if that were ever to occur. This would be helpful when there are instances when permit parking would assist with, say, for instance, a development on private property or at a park like what we are proposing to do at Dills Park with Soccer Field. So again, that would be staff-generated. It would come before the council. So two things you're going to hear tonight. First, the cleanup ordinance, and then the resolution. So with that, we'll turn it over to another guest speaker, Mr. Anthony Martinez. He's our Senior Management Analyst from our Public Safety Department. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you very much, John. Madam Mayor and members of the Paramount City Council. In April of this year, the City Council adopted Ordnance 1127, which allowed 14819 Downey Avenue to become part of the Neighborhood Permit Parking Program. This measure came after Public Safety proposed to City Council that residents of 14819 Downey Avenue have the same permit parking privileges as those that reside on Second Street. Permit parking is required on Second Street and available to those in that neighborhood. Now, although 14819 Downey Avenue physically sits on Second Street, they carry a Downey Avenue address, which at the time restricted them from permit parking privileges. In December of 2018, City Council adopted Ordnance 1110, which authorized the council to establish criteria on how to designate permit parking in the city. Pardon me. Unfortunately, Ordnance 1127 amended a subsection of the code that no longer existed because it was removed in 2018 after the adoption of Ordnance 1110. As a result, staff recognized that there were inconsistencies with the authorization, excuse me, the criteria authorized under 1110 and the actions under Ordnance 1127. Since adopting Ordnance 1127, Public Safety has issued parking permits to 16 out of 90 households of 14819 Downey Avenue. Now, correcting this administrative error would require repealing Ordnance 1127, and repealing this ordinance would remove the authority to include the Downey Avenue complex into the permit parking program. However, staff plans to present a new proposal that will continue serving the residents of 14819 Downey Avenue with their permit parking needs and to prepare for future parking challenges. Therefore, staff proposes the adoption of Urgency Ordinance 1138 to repeal Ordnance 1127. This urgency measure will keep the original intent of 1110 and ensure the continued implementation of the criteria established under it. This measure will also support the city's ongoing codification efforts. Now on to Resolution 20029. In December 2018, the City Council adopted Resolution 18035 as part of its criteria efforts under Ordnance 1110. This resolution created the actual procedures in establishing neighborhood permit parking in the city. These procedures start with a screening process, then move on to a qualification process divided into five phases. But most notably, this resolution set the foundation on how the city now establishes permit parking and paved the way for new procedures to address permit parking issues. As time moves on, staff recognizes that the current procedures may require modifications to address permit parking. Such challenges would include those at 14819 Downey Avenue and potentially those at 6500 Block of San Carlos Street to prepare for the construction of a mini soccer court, which may bring more vehicles into the neighboring block. As it stands, the city's Neighborhood Permit Parking Program does not allow for a staff-initiated request. Only residents may initiate a request. Now, adding to the existing procedures, staff proposes to amend the procedures in establishing and terminating neighborhood permit parking to prepare for such future parking challenges. Therefore, staff proposes the authorization for the Public Safety Director to recommend to the City Council the approval or denial of neighborhood permit parking if one or more of the following factors exist. Homes or parcels adjacent to an existing neighborhood permit parking may experience or may experience negative parking effects, such as the parking challenges mentioned of 14819 Downey Avenue. Neighborhoods that experience or may experience negative parking effects from newly established or expanding businesses, services, or facilities. A future example as such would be Metro's upcoming West Santa Ana Light Rail Branch, excuse me, project. And for new housing developments at the requests of the Planning Director as part of the parking management plan. Currently, the Neighborhood Permit Parking Program does not have procedures to terminate a neighborhood permit parking area. And an amendment that contains such procedures supports the continuity in maintaining a balanced parking permit program. Therefore, staff proposes the authorization for the Public Safety Director, the Public Safety Commission, or the City Council to approve or deny the termination of neighborhood permit parking if one or more of the following factors exist. A termination petition from property owners of at least 75% within the neighborhood permit parking area. The criteria previously used to establish a neighborhood permit parking area no longer exists or has significantly changed. A neighborhood permit parking area has now created unreasonable negative parking effects against surrounding neighborhoods. The number of parking permit holders within a neighborhood permit parking area has dropped well below 50% following the implementation or renewal period. Now, for this particular termination factor, Public Safety will provide a fair amount of time backed up with community outreach well before entertaining this termination factor. And a motion made by the City Council to terminate a neighborhood permit parking area. The procedures establishing neighborhood permit parking currently in effect remain the same. However, these new amendments will augment the existing procedures to create a more comprehensive and balanced permit parking program that meets today's and future parking challenges. It is in the best interest, that, excuse me, as is in the best interest, Public Safety will revisit the Neighborhood Permit Parking Program on an annual basis to ensure its effectiveness for the services of residents. Before you today will be two recommendations. First one, it is recommended that the City Council read by title only, waive further reading, and adopt Urgency Ordinance 1138, which will be effective immediately. Followed by, it is recommended that the City Council read by title only and adopt Resolution 20029. At this point, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. First of all, I want to know where your teleprompter is, because I couldn't believe how much of that you memorized. It's like, whoa, where's he reading all this? Not looking at your papers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
How about you? Okay. Now for real questions. Anybody have any questions?
I just have a comment. I went to the mini pitch soccer, a proposal that they're going to do at Dills Park. And I did mention to David and John about the parking situation. And I'm glad that you're looking into that. And it might be a possibility, it might be more increased parking. So I was real pleased with the tour that I had and the information that I was given. So, okay.
Excellent, Councilmember. No, thank you for the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have one question. So by changing these ordinances, are we affecting? We're affecting people on Downey right now that have a parking permit, right? So what will be the solution to that? And I missed that in your great presentation, but I just noticed that there's like, there's a few people, right, that live on 14819 Downey Avenue that currently have permits.
Yes, Vice Mayor, that is correct. So we have approximately 16 households that went to us and got permits.
Correct.
And again, as mentioned, as we go through the motions, and if the City Council makes a recommendation, the next step would be to apply the factor suggesting that parcels or homes adjacent to a neighborhood permit apartment, such as 14819, now apply. So in essence, we're removing them from the 1127 action and incorporating them into the Resolution 20029. And again, we approach this in a broad manner to say that, yes, as time progresses, other folks, other parcels, other homes will now perhaps experience the same issues as residents of the Downey Avenue complex.
So they would be approved under a different, under 20029?
Yes.
Got it.
We're going to remove them to a new approval.
So those other residents would be? Can fill out an application for a parking permit besides 14819? Correct? The other residents that live in the same, I mean, behind the apartments?
If I could take that question, Anthony? It would only, if we're talking about the Downey apartment complex, like Anthony mentioned, it's almost like a wash, we're removing them from an ordinance and putting them into a resolution. So anybody in that apartment complex could apply?
And what about the other residents that live around that apartment building?
It's already a resident permit parking area. So it's only the apartment complex that would be affected. Currently, there's only 16 people that have applied, and that's because there's property, or there's actually parking stalls on the property.
Okay. Okay. All right, just, thank you.
If there's no further questions, we would need a motion on Urgency Ordinance Number 1138.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Quayle Stallings. Seconded by Aguayo. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. And now we'll move to Resolution Number 20029, which we've had the staff report on, and I need a motion on that item.
So moved.
So second.
Moved by Olmos. Vice Mayor Olmos. Seconded by Councilmember Quayle Stallings. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to Item 17, a memorandum of understanding with PUSD student tutoring contract with Paper.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Council, at a recent council meeting, the council approved funding to help the school district provide free online tutoring for the school kids. The city will share this total cost of the tutoring with the school district. So before you tonight is the agreement with the district that states that we are sharing in this cost and how much we agree to pay. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Community Services and Recreation Director, Mr. David Johnson, who will handle the item. Dave?
Thank you, John. Mayor and councilmembers. The item for you tonight is the Administrative Mechanism, a memorandum of understanding that will allow us to participate with Paramount Unified School District in the funding of the online tutoring platform that they've established for their students to use during this school year. The company providing this tutoring platform is called Paper. The Paramount Unified School District School Board did approve the agreement with Paper for their online tutoring program at their September 14, 2020, meeting. The City Council approved our participation with Paramount Unified School District to provide supportive funding for this educational online tutoring platform at your September 1, 2020, meeting. $100,000 will come from our CARES Act funding and additional $25,000 from our ACES after-school funding. Pending final approval by the agreement by the City Attorney, the city will contribute a total of $125,000 towards the total cost of the tutoring platform and assist Paramount Unified School District with marketing of the program. Paramount Unified School District will contribute $175,000 towards the total cost, and they will provide all implementation and coordinating activities necessary to operate this program, and they will provide periodic reporting as to the usage and operations of the platform. We are recommending approval of the MOU between the City of Paramount and Paramount Unified School District, providing financial support for the Paper tutoring program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I have two questions. When does it start?
I believe it's actually started now. I, they've sent out-
But it's available even though the funding isn't there yet?
Correct.
Okay. Because I haven't seen. Has anybody seen promotion? I haven't seen it.
Yeah, so they've sent out emails to people in the district who have children enrolled. They've, so I have a staff member on staff that actually showed me the emails that were sent out. They've done connected messages directly to their school community. So it is out there. Students can now go on to their Schoology account. And I guess you kind of get connected through your email, and they can start now.
Oh, I'll have to look at that. I'm not sure how that works. And do you know what the length of the contract is?
It takes us through the end of the school year, so it'd be the end of June of 2021.
So it's not quite a year, right?
That's correct.
Motion?
So moved.
So second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Olmos. Seconded by Quayle Stallings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
I jumped the gun, huh?
Didn't raise your hand.
We're going to move to Item 18, the proposed resolution supporting social media platform accountability for criminal acts to be heard by the League of California Cities.
Yes, our last item in open- annual conference coming up this week. Vice Mayor Olmos is Paramount's voting delegate, and she will be asked to cast her vote on this item. The question before you is whether or not social media platforms like Twitter, Facebook, Instagram should be held liable for allowing messages to be posted that allow for criminal activities to be publicized. If the League's membership does vote in favor of this, then the League's staff will be directed to lobby congressional leaders in Washington, D.C. in an attempt to change a federal law that governs these social media platforms. So with that, to go over the process and more about this, is our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Andrew Vialpando. Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Yeah, as John introduced, this is a request by our partners over at the California League of California Cities, and what this presentation will hopefully do is give you some insight into the process and exactly what they're requesting from this body. So this request is based on a resolution that was submitted by the City of Cerritos, coincidentally, just our neighboring city, over to the League of California Cities. They, the City of Cerritos is asking the League of Cities to back any sort of legislation or congressional action at the federal level regarding a certain item that is of their concern. So I'll go into the details of that resolution in a moment. Just for procedural, just to explain the procedural process of how this would work, so the League of California Cities General Assembly Meeting is going to be this Friday, October 9, 2020. Depending on how the City Council takes action this weekend, or I'm sorry, this evening, our city's delegate, Vice Mayor Olmos, will attend that meeting virtually and provide an either, cast a vote either support or opposition for this proposed resolution, again, that was submitted by the City of Cerritos. Note, this is not a piece of legislation that you'll be voting on. Rather, this, any action this evening will simply provide direction to the Vice Mayor, again, our voting delegate for the League of California Cities, on how to cast her vote this Friday. So a little bit of background of what this resolution is. As mentioned, this is sent by the City of Cerritos. They're requesting that the League provide some teeth to federal law, holding online platforms accountable where their forms enable criminal activity to be promoted. The proposed resolution submitted by Cerritos would also require online platforms to share information to law enforcement and cities to assist in identification and apprehension of any individuals participating in that sort of online criminal proliferation. The resolution, the idea from Cerritos stems from the recent civil unrest experiences that occurred just several months ago, and in many cases still continue to occur throughout the nation. In this particular example, as you may recall, the City of Lakewood had some, were dealing with some pretty tough things when they actually had some looting going on at Lakewood Mall. The City of Cerritos caught wind of some online activity on social media, Facebook, Instagram, and so on, of some potential looting that would occur, that would move over to the Cerritos Mall. So they really ramped up their staffing, their policing, and a lot of their public safety efforts over at the Cerritos Mall, which, as you can imagine, costs many, many thousands of dollars. And the inception of the idea that, you know, there should be some sharing or some accountability on how those, that sort of information is proliferated, you know, whether it's inciting criminal activity, should at least be shared with public safety authorities, just in the interest of public safety. So again, this isn't an item that is up for legislation yet, and this, of course, isn't an item that originated from the City of Paramount, but as a member of the California League of Cities, we are, the League is requesting that the city, that the City Council send a person, a delegate, to vote whether they're in favor or in opposition on behalf of the City of Paramount to continue and pursue this sort of activity at the legislative level. So in your packets this evening, as attachment A, is a very in-depth staff analysis by the League of California Cities. I won't go into that in detail, but I can give you an idea. It looks at several things, and one being constitutional concerns, such as censorship, free speech. This is a lot where, you know, you'll hear things like, you know, the First Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment rights. It also looks at industry perspective, so, you know, the perspective from both Silicon Valley and the other, you know, firms that are in the social media game, and challenges that Congress has had in the past with trying to regulate social media and internet. It also looks at the fiscal impact of such legislation or legislative action, and provides other considerations that Congress may take. So really, the crux of this evening is, or the crux of this resolution is about trying to create strategies to deter and combat online activities that intend to cause harm to our communities. And unlike TV and radio, which are censored and regulated by the FCC, there really is no regulatory agency for the internet or social media. For example, if a radio or a TV station wanted to air something that was inciting violence or encouraging participation in some sort of illegal activity, it's likely that the FCC at some point would intervene or come down with some sort of action. Currently, there's no such, there's no such method to do that, or mechanism to do that for social media or online forums. So that's kind of what we're looking at, at this evening, and really what the City Council, what the Paramount City Council should be considering is, while there's certainly an argument to substantiate concerns surrounding censorship, use of social media as a tool for organizing violence is equally disturbing, and this was actually the position that is found in the League of California Cities Staff Report attached. So with that, the next steps are, the League requested that this evening, the Council discuss and consider how to, what position to take on this proposed resolution, so that the Vice Mayor can go over on Friday and cast a vote, whether in support or opposition. If the resolution passes, the League's General Assembly on Friday, the League will start engaging Congress on potential legislation or action in support of regulations for social media or online platforms. If the resolution does not pass the General Assembly on Friday, the League will not pursue further action on the matter at this time. So at this point, it's recommended that the City Council provide direction to the City of Paramount's League of California Cities Voting Delegate, Vice Mayor Olmos, on whether to vote in favor or opposition of the proposed resolution calling for the League to urge Congress to amend federal law pertaining to social media accountability for criminal acts at the upcoming General Assembly Meeting on October 9, 2020. I would be happy to answer questions to the extent that I know them. Again, a lot of the information is already provided in the League Staff Report.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Questions? Okay, so we need to give direction to Vice Mayor Olmos, whether or not we would like her to vote in favor or in opposition of this resolution. Do I have a motion?
My motion, for the approval?
So you move that we have her vote in favor or in opposition of the item?
In favor.
I second that.
We have a second. So it's been moved by Councilmember Quayre Stallings that we direct Vice Mayor Olmos to vote in favor of the resolution, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Aguirre. And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to move to comments or committee reports from council members, and I'm going to start with you, Ms. Councilmember Quayre Stallings.
Okay. Broke down some things. Okay, I attended with Vice Mayor Olmos and Councilmember Aguirre to the Assembly Member Rendon's backpack giveaway. It was quite successful, and we had quite a few parents and students that showed up and got their backpacks.
Oh, that's great.
So it was really nice, and I liked the process, the way they, I didn't know that you had to make a reservation and there was a process, but that was nice. And also, I went and attended the census that Paramount Unified School District was holding, and I went around noon time, and they only had five parents, and I seen quite a few principals, Kelly Anderson and Mrs. Soto, and I seen a couple other principals from different schools, and they were all ready to engage with the parents, and they were very well-staffed and ready to go, but I wish there would have been more participation. Principal Anderson had mentioned to me that they were on the way to go to Northgate and try to pass out some flyers and try to encourage some parents to come and fill out their census. So I was real happy with that, and very, very well-ready to go and assist the parents and also give them free tacos, so. And then I also was very pleased with the unity in the community meeting. I thought it was an excellent meeting. I think it was a very informative meeting, and I went back and watched it twice, and very, very, very pleased with that meeting. And also, I wanted to mention that I did go last month to the mini pitch soccer court in the future with John and David, and was well informed how that's going to be taking place and things that trees are going to be removed, and I'm like, okay, and things that are going to occur, and also the parking situation, and I'm very pleased. Thank you. Thank you, everyone that works hard for our city, our staff, and thank you, all of you directors that you work very hard for us and for our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Quayre Stallings. Councilmember Aguirre?
Sure. Really, you know, just thank you to our public safety team. Today, there was a lot of stuff going on that's not the stuff we want to hear, but the way you guys handle these situations really is, as I say, top-notch, and I believe that, you know, maybe, maybe you don't get the thanks that you guys deserve, because maybe it's viewed as a celebration, and sometimes on these occasions, they're not. They're unfortunate events, but really, thank you for that. I actually really had the privilege of meeting with Steve and Maggie last week to talk about, you know, just our homeless residents. It's something that's actually really, really important to me, and I was blown away by the heart of just that team, where, to hear that they go out and establish these relationships with people that, they're people, they're human, and sometimes, you know, we tend to want to look the other way and not, not take them for what they are, again, another human being, and that they are so hands-on, and the partnership that the city has with, you know, the L.A. Homeless Service Authority. Again, like I said, I mean, to say I was blown away just doesn't describe it. I have yet to come across really another city or organization that is as hands-on as Paramount is, where it's not, oh, we're going to, you know, give it over to this agency. No. In our public safety department, you know, there are individuals that take the time to do this. Sometimes, sometimes it's a lot of time, but they're establishing these relationships, and it shows in the numbers. So, you know, again, that was really, really great for me to see. And really, you know, like Vilma said, I mean, I can't thank the staff and our directors and everybody that does a lot of the legwork for us. Thank you. Thank you, you know, I mean, always there to answer, you know, all the questions that, you know, I may have, or, you know, any doubts, and, you know, it is appreciated, and it has allowed me to go back to the residents and tell them like, well, you know, it seems this way, but that's not really what it is, and these are the reasons why we have to do things a certain way, or we can't do certain things. So thank you, guys, really.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. Vice Mayor?
Absolutely. I have no committee updates, but I do have a couple of comments that I wanted to mention. You guys have already mentioned about the unity in the community, and I actually really want to thank Chief Rambo, Captain Springle, and our committee, our residents committee. They had great dialogue that day, but actually, I watched it a couple times, and I actually took some recommendations that they were talking about of how to improve our community relations. They talked about a citizens' academy, where the citizens have the opportunity to sit with the DA, understand the process, understand the role of a sheriff, you know, and I think sometimes that's kind of what we need. We need to be able to educate our residents on what the process is, Adriana. Your team does so much, and I think they need to understand just how much you guys do. So if at all possible, maybe if we can get information on that citizens' academy, I think that would be great. They also mentioned Neighborhood Watch, which, again, we already have one, and I'm so proud of the team. We held, we held the first virtual meeting. We had a good attendance. I thought it was a great attendance, and great job for Steve, I'm going to mess that last name up, Steve Combrano. There you go. Thank you. And to the sheriff who joined. It was really nice to put names to the faces. I think the residents were like, ah, okay, that's who that is, you know? It was kind of like a personal, personal feeling. But what resonated with me, what Chief Rambo mentioned, was that police needs to know the community they serve. So how do we get that message across? Like, how do we improve our messaging? And maybe, you know, again, we partner with the Sheriff's Department and try to figure something out. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the takeover that happened on Friday evening at about 1:30. In the morning, I had a few family members that got stuck in that. That was on Downey Madison, and I know our ordinance has went into effect October 1st. Do we have any reports of any arrests or anything that happened that evening?
No, Madam Mayor, I don't, but we do have a training coming up, and our city attorney is going to be part of that, where all the patrol deputies, as well as our special assignment officers, will be part of that, so that we can go ahead and start implementing this. The direction was to educate the residents first, and then to be able to train the deputies, so we're at the last step, and that will be October 14.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I had the pleasure, a week or so ago, I believe it was, of cooking with Kat, which is our Parks and Recreation Program. I also had the pleasure of viewing Vice Mayor Olmos's Chinese chicken salad preparation, and Councilmember Aguirre's pork chops and mac and cheese, and I hope that you will all watch me make cheese blintzes, and be making them for your family the following Sunday.
I thought you made crepes. Wasn't it? Didn't you make crepes?
Crepes, what holds the cheese. So if you put fruit in it, it's a crepe. If you put cheese in it, it's a blend.
Oh, I did watch it. I saw you. I saw you. I saw cooking with Mayor Lemmons. Yeah.
I didn't know it was out there. I have to see it.
I did see it.
So I really enjoyed cooking with Kat. And so for those of you looking for new recipes and a little crazy entertainment of not-so-professional chefs, tune in, because you'll have a great time. I'd also like to take a moment to do a personal mea culpa to my husband, whose anniversary I forgot today. Sweetheart, you've been 48 years of nothing but support and bliss, and I love you, and I apologize. With that, we'll move on to staff reports.
Yes, I just have two, Madam Mayor and Council. Clean Air Day is tomorrow. We are definitely promoting that as much as we can. I put that in your weekly memo. I mentioned that we were going to try to do a giveaway of 25 bus passes, but it's not working out because both lines, both Metro and Long Beach Transit, aren't charging to ride right now, so they don't even have bus passes, so it's kind of pointless at this point. So we pivoted, and we switched gears, and we are going to provide bicycles in honor of Clean Air Day for the first few residents who complete the pledge, the Clean Air Day pledge, and send it in. So there will be a social media message going out, and so that's going to be something to promote that with. So be on the lookout for that. The next thing, just to reiterate what was said earlier about the unity in the community, yes, we thought it was a wonderful discussion. Just to let you know, the views on YouTube of the video are up to almost 200. They were at 196 yesterday, so a lot of people are watching it within the first few days, so that's pretty, pretty good. So, and that concludes.
Thank you. I think it's important to note to, to the residents that the, the committee is evolving, you know, and they're listening to you as residents, the topics you want to discuss, how to best engage you for information, like Vice Mayor Olmos talked about, about programs and services we can bring to...
to discuss, how to best engage you for information, like Vice Mayor Olmos talked about, about programs and services we can bring to the city. So help us be part of the solution. And don't be upset if it doesn't meet every need that you want it to right now. We haven't set an expiration date on this committee. It's not like, oh, three months and we're done with it. Six months and we're done with it. We're going to continue to talk and to engage the community until we feel there's no need to, or maybe it becomes an ongoing process. It's really kind of in the hands of the residents and the feedback that you give to the committee and the usefulness that it is to our city as a whole. So like I said, be, be part of the answer, you know? Give them your feedback. Give them your recommendations. Applaud their efforts for stepping up and doing something positive. And with that, we will recess to closed session for a conference with real property negotiators, property APN number 6270025026 and APN 6270025027, agency negotiator John Moreno, city manager, under negotiation terms of payment.
So the city attorney will announce what happened in closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city attorney, the city council did conduct a duly authorized closed session under the government code regarding conference with real property negotiators. Property was APN 6270-025-026 and APN number 6270025027. The agency negotiator was Mr. John Moreno, the city manager, under the negotiation with terms of payment. After a discussion in closed session, the action right now is, there was no action taken at this particular time, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. With that, we'll adjourn the Paramount City Council meeting to October 20 at 5 p.m. I call to order the Paramount Successor Agency, Paramount Redevelopment Agency. Can I have a roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Aguirre?
Here.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Here.
Mayor Lemmons?
Here. Do I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Guian?
Moved by Vice Mayor Olmos, seconded by Councilmember Quer Stallings. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Do we have any public comments?
No, there are no public comments.
Okay, we'll move to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Quer Stallings?
Second.
Seconded by Aguirre?
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. With that, we're adjourned to November 3, 2026 p.m. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.